Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the June 26, 2007 Special Meeting of the Glendale City Council concerning a continuation of our budget study session. Mr. Starbuck.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Several things we'd like to-
Let me interrupt you, Jim. I forgot to ask for a roll to be called.
Councilmembers Draymond-
Here.
Quintero, Weaver, Yusefian-
Here.
Mayor Najarian-
Here.
All right, Joe. Mr. Mayor, we view this morning as sort of a wrap-up study session. Not sure how long it will take. Hopefully, we'll be wrapped up by 11:00. But we wanted to come back. This evening is your final action on the city's budget for 2007, 2008. And we wanted to make sure that we had wrapped up any loose ends remaining going into this evening. So for that purpose, we've brought back three items in particular but are prepared to touch on any matters that you feel we need to prior to this evening's action on the budget. The items that remain to be addressed and for which we had questions outstanding first was the scheduling for the CIP projects review. And that's the first item we'd like to touch on. And then we thought we'd get into the question of overtime, which was an outstanding issue question on behalf of one or more council members. And we provided you with a table of salaries and overtime by department, which we'll touch on and answer any questions. And then most importantly, we'd like the fire department to take some time to take you through the issues that drive overtime. I won't say issue, the dynamics that drives overtime in the fire department. It'll probably be everything you always want to know but were afraid to ask about fire department scheduling, tactics, and operations. And the fire department staff, Chris Gray, and his support staff have spent a lot of time putting together a presentation for you this morning. So let me suggest that we start with the scheduling question, scheduling of meetings. It was requested before we adopt the budget, we actually take a look at schedule for coming back to discuss the CIP projects. The item not on the list is probably the first study session that we'd like to have before you actually get into the meat of the unfunded CIP projects. And that is a study session to talk about reserves and reserve policies. You recall, that was requested by Mr. Quintero at the last meeting. I think it's a very good idea that we spend some time and talk about the city's reserves, fund balances, and reserve policies. There's a lot of, I think, misunderstanding in the community about that because people tend to look at our investment portfolio and call that whole big pot of money our reserves. That's not the case. The reserves are structured along the same lines as our accounting structure, which is very complex and is limited by statute and by policy of the city council. So before we talk about projects and the priorities for funding, we should probably have a good understanding of what our reserve structure and our fund balance structure is so you know what resources could be available. So we should probably make that the first study session. And then the balance of study sessions, the amount that we'll need will really depend on where the discussion of the various unfunded projects take us. And Ron has provided you with a list here. If you have your schedules, we can work on actual dates today. We know that most of July, we don't have a full city council. I think we have three meetings in July that we're missing, one or more council members, as I recall. So we're likely going to be looking at starting these, the first part of August, your schedule What we can do is we can just begin to plug these in beginning in August with every Tuesday and then go until we get done. If we're missing a council member, vacations interrupt that. We can reschedule a meeting or cancel a meeting and pick up where we left off, but that would be my suggestion.
And would you envision tackling, I mean, we'll probably get through several of these-
I think so. A lot will depend on, some of these we require more information on. For example, the question of soccer fields, just as a broad category of unfunded needs. We have a lot of information on alternatives, but for something like, for example, further development of Site A or Site C, we might need to do a little more work to get some of the estimated costs in hand. But that's a topic we could probably take up with a number of alternatives for you and some estimated costs. Projects we need to possibly do a little more work on, alternatives for a dog park, for example, and costing for that and possible sites. That might take us a little more time to gather some information. Community aquatics center as opposed to a neighborhood swim facility. Aquatics facility, we'd have some very generalized numbers, but for example, if you want to get very specific about site, that might take a little more time. But certainly, we could develop a sense of the council's priorities for these things and see which ones you'd want us to take up first, which ones we should do some more work on. So again, it's hard to gauge how much time. My guess is we should be able to get through these discussions in three full morning study sessions or so. I think reserves will take us a morning, so reserves will take us a study session, and then probably three or four to pull the CIP together, I would think.
And the order that they appear on this, on these three pages, in no way indicates staff's preference or-
No priority. Our suggestion would be that one of the first items we try to bring to a conclusion is a resolution of Fire Station 26 and Casa Verdugo Library so that you could participate in the balance of the discussions because you'd have to abstain from that very first conversation. So we try to bring some finality to that in our first study session following the discussion of reserves. And then if we can, then you could participate in the balance of the CIP discussions. I might also add, if there's items that we've overlooked that should be on this list, then we should put these items, put those items on the list as well. So let us know if there's anything that we've forgotten or overlooked.
So with regard to the list of projects, is there anything that we would like to include that's not included? Or do you see any reason to monkey with the list in terms of moving something up or down?
That was a technical term.
I don't know how to monkey with things, but I'll tell you that I don't think this is, the list is in any particular order.
No, there's no priority.
I would, as I said, Mr. Mayor, I would like to deal with certain items first because it lets us know what, how much money we will end up having for other stuff. One of the issues that I would like to deal with is Mountain Oaks. That's the first thing I want to deal with, and that would require a lot of information from planning and also from city attorney to let us know what options we have and what we can do.
And we're prepping that.
So that would be my first one I would like to deal with. The second one that I would like to deal with that also has raised a lot of interest is Montrose Library, followed by Rock Haven because there's a, I mean, a nexus to that. Fire Station 26, is that the one in the Montrose?
No.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine is Montrose.
So I think twenty-nine needs to be next. And all of these will basically tie together and will deal with some of the Montrose issues. Then come back to Fire Station 26 and Casa Verdugo.
Yeah, we'll need to interject there.
I know. Then he'll be conflicted out, but he's asking me what my preference is. If you want, we can leave those two out. Let's leave those two out. Go to the street project.
Hold it. Here's the problem. If we don't, if we don't address Fire Station, as long as Fire Station 26 and Casa Verdugo Library are not addressed with some finality, then ARA continues to be conflicted out in all of the, all of the CIP discussion. Because they all, except for streets from, from street funds, which all the gas tax money is already allocated and spent, anything else that will draw on general CIP money will then, then be competing with Casa Verdugo Fire Station and Library.
Are we not discussing those?
No, you're not. But ARA will be conflicted out if Fire Station 26 and Casa Verdugo Library are not acted on in some form of finality. So as long as they sit out there, ARA continues to be conflicted out. Because, for example, if you wanted to fund Montrose Library at the expense of Casa Verdugo, then that could potentially cause ARA a conflict. In the same way with any project on here, whether it's pool or whether it's dog park, if it can be, if it could be competing with Casa Verdugo, then ARA will have a conflict. Right, Mr. City Attorney?
That is completely correct. The FPPC regulations provide that when you discuss these broad issues such as budget or general plans, if a council member has a potential conflict of interest, that conflict of interest precludes the council member from participating in any of the discussion unless parts, discrete parts can be segmented and they're not inextricably, as they say, intertwined with the others. So if you can segment them out and deal with the ones that caused the conflict first and bring them to finality, then the council member with the conflict can come back in and discuss the rest.
What the finality is, we don't do anything.
If, if, that could be. If your, if your decision is, we are, when you say we're not doing anything, it can't be, well, let's hold it till we finish the rest of this discussion.
No.
It has to be-
Let's hold it until next year.
We're deciding. That's a decision. That's, and that would be fine in a budget, because it's a budgetary project or a budgetary matter that's reviewed year by year, the answer would be yes. If the final decision was, no, we're not doing anything, we're not going to touch this until next budget cycle, but we want to deal with all these other ones now, you come up and you make that decision on Fire Stations 20, on Fire Station 26 and Casa Verdugo first.
That's why we anticipated, whether it's to take action or whether it's to fund something or not fund something, you need to take an action. So we'd anticipate needing to address Casa Verdugo first. Otherwise, ARA can't participate in the balance of the discussion.
Okay, so, so then I guess we will deal with Fire Station 26 and Casa Verdugo first.
Yes, sir.
And after that, we'll go to Mountain Oaks, then Montrose Library, then Rock Haven-
Station 29.
Then Station 29, and then street projects. And, and the next thing that I like to kind of deal with is going to be Pacific Pool and, because we have some money there, and then go back to the soccer fields.
Since we're talking pools, why don't we talk about the aquatic center-
Okay.
-as well, and then go to-
So we can deal with, we can do a study session on the, just the pools in general, which is, one is the Pacific Pool, and where is the other one?
Right below it.
Right below it.
Okay, communities, so that will be-
And then move into the other recreational components.
Then move to the soccer field, which is eight.
And then the parks?
And then go to the parks.
Park, dog park, joint parks.
Right, so we should keep all those together if possible, all the parks. So that will be nine, 10, 11. Oh, Doran Street Park? What is that?
That is Phase Two of the housing project, I think.
I think that's being done by how-
Sounds like it.
Right.
I think it is too. Why is it on the list?
And they're combined, they're doing it now both at the same time. Yeah, so that's-
I think, I think, I think-
That's already been funded.
No, I think there remains a question of whether the open space part of Phase Two can be funded entirely with housing funds or whether it needs a contribution from the CIP.
Anybody from housing?
That's what I recall, was there was a question of whether or not there could be justification for funding the open space entirely from housing funds. And I think that was going to take some research on our part to figure that out.
Because the last time we talked about how much money we have in housing for the Aljormac project, we were told that Stage Two is already funded, it's in the money. And actually, the person who wanted to do that project in Phase One, Phase Two has been able to get the money, so they're going to do both phases simultaneously.
Okay, I don't want to get into the details of the particular project, but just in terms of the scheduling.
So you need money for this or you don't?
Well, I, I think we had it under unfunded, a total of about 1 million in the unfunded section of the CIP.
That was for the open space part of the Doran Phase Two.
Right, that was for the open space, not for any part of the housing.
I'm not sure it's clear that we can fund all of that from housing funds.
Okay, so let's put it on 12.
I think there's just a question mark on that.
Okay, so by then, that's far down enough that we'll figure this out.
Okay. And then pick up the, those are your 1 through 12s?
And 13 is Joint Park School. By the way, I did talk to the president of the school board. They told me that they are very much interested in having a joint meeting.
In fact, we had a tentative date to look at.
I don't know when that is coming.
Out of our mayor's meeting with-
So if that happens, we don't need to deal with this, do we?
Well, you do, because it'll be competing for money.
Wouldn't that happen at the joint meeting type of thing?
Well, probably not. I mean, you're probably focused on one or two projects at most, the joint meeting, Columbus, and I forget what all we talked about, but to come up with your priority on, on the whole list of possible joint parks, school projects, you probably need to do that in light of all the other requests you'll have here. I'm anticipating that this is going to be a bit of an iterative process. So you go through, you have a discussion, then you get down to a point, there's something else you'd still like to do, but there's no money, or it's in a far-out year, and you may then want to go back and revisit the things that you talked about before to see if something can fit or other things can be moved around. That's generally how this CIP budgeting happens over multiple years. As you go through, you make your first pass, you hit a wall on something, you go back, you look at it again, figure out how you can adjust things, you move further on, you hit something else, you go back, you make some more adjustment until you put it all together.
Jim?
Yeah, I think some of that discussion should be with the soccer fields discussion because I think the intent was to create soccer fields with a joint use.
So you want to put the eight and the 13 together?
A lot of things-
Or it could be together, so all the parks can be all together.
That's probably a good idea. Parks, soccer fields, baseball fields, lump all of those into one big study session because they all tend to compete, whether it's dog parks, soccer fields, baseball facilities, joint school use projects, they probably fall in the same category.
So you don't, you don't make a decision one day to go ahead and do, let's say, soccer fields, and then next day, you talk about mini parks and you go, gee, I just spent all my money over there, so let's go back. So you don't go back and forth, you just do it all at once.
Well, and we will have one this evening come up in the conversation about stengel lighting. Part of that project is turfing the outfield. There'll probably be some interest expressed in looking at an option for doing artificial turf on the outfield so it could be used as a soccer field. If that's the case, we'll probably recommend that you disconnect the lighting from the turf project and bring that whole possibility of it being artificial turfed for soccer field into your CIP discussion.
Is that okay with my colleagues, as far as the-
Mr. Draymond?
No, I can, I think that's fine. I, especially if we know that we can alter as we go, if we see that there's a possibility of combining some issues together, that something becomes apparent that we're not aware of, or people's schedules as we go along, other than that, I have no objection.
I'm noting as well, we can probably put all libraries under one heading. You've got Full Branch Library, Brand Library, Renovate Central Library.
But, but we got to do the Casa Verdugo and the Fire Station first.
Right, with the exception of that one, you got to do it first. But the other libraries can be lumped in together, parks in together with soccer fields, aquatics is separate, but talking about Pacific Park and Community Aquatic Center altogether. So we can pull those together. I think we have, if, if the rest of the council is in agreement with Mr. Yusefian's list of priorities here, we can group them in that way. And my suggestion is we just start in August and take each Tuesday. And if we lose a council member here or there, we'll decide whether to reschedule or move on.
Can we start a little bit earlier? Can we start in July? Because in August, I think some of us may be out.
Well, some of you are out in July is the problem.
Well, no, not, I know we have full council on the 17th. We have one on the following week. So I mean, can we start like on the 17th?
We can come in and do reserves fairly easily. Some of these items, depending on, on what information it needs for us to pull together, we could probably deal with Fire Station 26 and Casa Verdugo fairly quickly, so we could probably get two under our belt.
So when we move into August, we got rid of those first.
Can we pull the reserves presentation together, Ron?
I think we can do that.
You can almost have that discussion with last year's Caffer.
We will have it with the old-
Yeah, okay.
Okay. And again, there's no implied priority in the order that these are put forth. They're done mainly for logical and efficiency reasons, just because a project, if someone's favorite project is dead last, street sign replacement, that in no mean implies that that's last on our list of priorities. We'll be discussing all those and hashing it out on the dais. Okay, if that sounds good, Mr. Draymond and Mr. Quintero, please-
That sounds great to me. I just will go on the record also saying, I'll bet you, not to monkey with it, because that's the operative word today, apparently, but I'll just bet you that we're not going to end up with this order anyway. I think this is going to evolve and orchestrate in a way that none of us were expecting.
That's, that's fine. There's, as long as we get time for each one of those-
That's probably the only thing we can be sure of.
Okay, thank you. And before we get on to the overtime issue, I have a card and a request for priority from Mr. Milano.
Morning, Mayor, Mayor Najarian, members of the city council, city staff. My name is Herbert Milano. Thank you once again for letting me have this priority to speak so I can get off to work. I've, as, in the past, I have mentioned to you how important it is for us to have proper performance measures. Because I cannot imagine how you can make choices, especially the difficult choices of what appear to be conflicting issues that you face, without having some kind of performance measures. Last week, I've, we heard one example of a choice between getting a tennis court and getting a fire station. And we see now the choices about having an aquatic facility versus other capital improvements. Unless you're able to look at performance measures going back years to figure out what our shortage is, it becomes a lot more difficult for the public to appreciate really where the priority should be, especially for areas that have been neglected for a long time. I come to you speaking as a person whose, only time that I worked for government was when I worked for the US Marines. And, and I look at the private sector and how much of the private sector employment situation is weak today. Individuals with, with jobs, salary position, white-collar jobs, cannot be assured of a job in a, I'm sorry, I'm finding, I'm not able to concentrate with it.
Please, please try to avoid the chatter.
The, yeah, it just seems like that whatever I'm presenting in front of you, it's, has no, no relevance, and I'm taking time off work to basically to come here. The private sector employment, today, I think we have 43 million people without health insurance. We have individuals who cannot be assured that they'll have a job this year. The, and as we look at those individuals who are actually paying the taxes, that we should, you know, have a reference point to say, look, our government is being a judicious, taking judicious steps to deal effectively with the way you use our tax money. Because those are the individuals through the back door, through the payment of the additional increases in, in electric rate and the utility tax rate, are basically paying for many of these things that you're going to deal with with regard to overtime and employment, for example. As a brief comparison, I'll use, for example, Public Works. 10 years ago, there were 184 salaried employees. Today, 186. It's an increase of two on the regular salaried employees. But if I look at, for example, at the number of buildings and homes been, and condominiums been built, I wonder, my God, shouldn't Public Works be having a significant more number of people to do the proper inspections that are needed, right? So here's where you can say, yeah, more people are needed because of the increasing housing and construction. And so when I look at these departments, I'm not picking on any single department, I'm just looking at getting performance evaluations for all of them. And, and I needed to pick up the, the issue with the fire department and the overtime because 27% of their salary position, of their hours are overtime. And if that's the case, we have $5 million in overtime, and we're paying, let's say, 1.5% for our overtime pay, you know, that's, you know, that would be like $3.3 million at regular pay, let's say, or 33 new positions at $100,000 a year per fireman. So if we could save a million and a half dollars, let's say- So if we could save a million and a half dollars, let's say, or, then we could still do it by adding thirty-three new firemen, for example, right? But we don't have that, and that is making an assumption that all of the overtime hours are justified, right? If everything is justified, and we have five million dollars in overtime, then we could reduce it by increasing thirty-three new firemen, which would be good for the city. But I think that it brings up another point, and that is the point of the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission. The fire department has no Armenian support board, if I can, if my data is correct. And if that is the case, and you have thirty-three positions that are available, then we would really have a serious position in trying to defend ourselves against an EEOC charge, for example. These are serious issues concerning fairness, concerning budget allocations, concerning choices, and concerning a judicious use of our, of our funds. Because as I come here time and time again, the choices become, we get a fire station, or do we get a park? Do we get a fire station, or do we get a tennis court, and so forth? And I think that the choices should not be placed in exactly that manner. I think that it should be placed in a comparative way, based upon the need of the communities as we have seen the trends, and oftentimes, the needs of the community for quality of life issues oftentimes get shorthanded. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. Mr. Quintero?
I just want to comment that like Mr. Milano, I was, my only government job was with the United States Marine Corps, and actually, in the northern regions of Vietnam, so it took me a few years to look at government from a different perspective, but city and local government isn't quite the same as, as a combat arm like the Marines are, Mr. Milano, so I just wanted to remind you of that.
Although we sometimes feel like it, I think.
Thank you, and let's continue, Ron, to the next portion of the study session. That's the only card with priority request.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I have distributed to the council this morning is a one-page handout titled Salaries and Overtime by Department, and the listing here is for the last three fiscal years, so it's two thousand and four, oh five, and these are actual audited numbers, two thousand and five, six, again, the actual what occurred, and then this current fiscal year, two thousand and six, seven, this is an estimate, the estimate is based that we've already completed eleven months of the year as of when I put this estimate together, so the number is going to be very close to these numbers when we actually finish out our year. And let me go through the report just to explain the column headings and so forth. Each, each department is listed here, so we have fifteen departments. The first column for each fiscal year is titled salaries, so this is all of your salaried employees and your salaried expense, so it does not include all of our hourly staff. The second column is our overtime, and that is strictly, it could be straight time overtime, it could be time and a half overtime, it all depends on the circumst- circumstance, the vast majority of this overtime is at time and a half. The third column is a, is a percentage, so it's just taking the overtime as a percentage of the salaries. Fourth column is our number of salaried employees during that fiscal year, and then the last column is overtime per salaried employee, so all that is, is a simple division of taking the overtime number, dividing it by the total number of salaried employees, and that would be our average overtime per salaried employee. It doesn't mean that each employee earned overtime during that year, all it means is giving you an average number of that, of the overtime for each department per salaried So you can see here that for, we've had not only growth in salaries over the last three fiscal years, but also growth in overtime, and we've had our overtime per salaried employee has gone up slightly from six thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars in oh four, oh five to sixty-four, thirty-eight, so it stayed about the same for oh five, oh six, and then for this year, it's gone up slightly to six thousand eight hundred and eighty-six dollars per salaried employee of the city. And with that, we can, I can answer any questions you may have, this was a question of the council last week, that you wanted the last three fiscal years and the data by department.
Before I take a comment, and just to clarify, the entire fire department issue will be addressed at our, at the next-
In the next presentation, correct.
Okay, so it'd be wise to hold our fire department questions perhaps until we go through that, but-
But if you have any general questions, we have department representatives here.
Mr. Yusefian.
Glendale Water and Power. I went through some of these things, and I can understand logic behind some of them, so maybe somebody can educate me on the logic on GWP. Some of them, we reduced the number of employees, hence the sal, I mean, the overtime goes up, and I can, and it's not that much, but I can, I can understand that part of it. The one I want to understand is Glendale Water and Power, we had three hundred and sixty-six employees in two thousand four, five, we're at three eighty-two, we actually increased the number of employees, but our person has gone up, so we have about a two million dollars actually on overtime. At that time, I think Mr. Troncoso came to us, and he wanted to have more employees, did we ever hire all the people who were going to be linesmen and all that stuff?
We're continuing to have challenges in doing it.
Because these are, when you show the number three sixty-six, these are salary employees that have been authorized, right?
Right, the authorized member.
Not actual bodies there.
No, this is actual bodies.
These are actual bodies.
These are actual bodies. GWP has authorization, I believe, for slightly over four hundred positions, so currently, in this fiscal year, two thousand and six, seven. So in four, five, those three hundred and sixty-six are actual bodies that worked during that year.
Okay, so they act, so, okay, that makes a big difference?
Yes.
And that's the number that's not reflected in here, because if they have authorization for four hundred, and how many did you say?
Give me a second. They are authorized in this current year for four hundred and twenty-five positions.
Okay.
In two thousand and four, five, they were authorized four hundred and fourteen.
Okay, and if, if we had paid these guys with the difference between four eighty-two and four twenty-five, if we paid all those guys, if they had hired them, would have, would have offset that two million dollars?
Let me, Mr. Starburt. Here's, here's a problem with, with making a direct correlation between numbers of people and overtime. In some cases, for some types of work, you probably can, but you can't necessarily assume that you can eliminate overtime by adding more people. For example, you may need more people just to respond to the basic workload, but you have a storm, windstorm, you have an issue that arises, you'll still need overtime. And in fact, in the safety services, my experience is, every individual carries some level of overtime by the very nature of the work. In law enforcement, for example, you may have more officers, but that just means more of them will be called to court, because you'll be writing more reports, a number of them will be held over at the end of shift, because things just can't be resolved by seven or eight o'clock in the morning. So by the very nature of the work, bodies sometimes will generate the need for overtime. You can't necess, although in some cases, you can reduce overtime, some components of it with more bodies, but you can't necessarily draw a correlation between the two.
Mr. Starburt, isn't that true, mutual aid too?
Absolutely.
If it's the fire and Griffith Park?
Absolutely.
Are people over there overtime?
Yeah, and I think you'll see some of those dynamics when the fire department gets into this discussion of overtime, it is very apparent there, because there are so many things that drive the overtime issue. Mr. Milano mentioned, if you took that money and bought more bodies, you could eliminate your overtime. Believe me, that would never happen, because frankly, if you had more people, you could eliminate or reduce some component of the overtime, but people will generate overtime depending on the nature of the operations that they're involved in, it's just part of the nature of the beast in many respects. So you can reduce some and impact it, but in other areas, you won't be able to impact it.
I presume we don't have anybody at Lake Tahoe?
I don't think we have anybody at Lake Tahoe, no.
Not yet.
No.
Mr. Quintero?
I assume one of the issues with the linemen is that the pay does not reach the DWP and MWD standards, or what's the issue with hiring more, more linemen for GWP?
We actually just had a meeting on this very issue. The issue is complex and multiple, and pay isn't necessarily the issue, because both LA DWP and Edison, they're all experiencing the same, same issue, that they, as an industry, it simply isn't industry that is drawing the kinds of numbers of people that used to be interested in going into it in the past. And so while we are competing with them, and it is very difficult to compete with Edison and GWP, because they cover such a broad range, people have housing choices and living choices that is more difficult than when you're constrained to a Burbank, Glendale, Pasadena, or something in that regard. That is one of the departments and HR's biggest challenges right now, is getting people recruited into these positions. There are a large number of vacancies, and as a result of, result of that, projects are going on, as you know, the capital improvement program has quite an investment in the infrastructure, much of that is done by contract, much of that is done by employees, some on regular time, some on overtime, as the department evaluates what's the most cost-effective way to provide the service, doing it in-house with a combination of straight time and overtime, or contracting it out. So it's a, that, that in particular, and it's not just this classification, that is the story that's behind a number of the classifications, engineers as a, as another series. City Glendale is having a great amount of difficulty with engineers of various different sorts, but it's not just Glendale, on an industry-wide basis it continues to be.
Okay, well, focusing on the issue of linemen, it's been an issue for a while, that I can remember for quite a few years, so what exactly have we done about it? I mean, have you gone out, what type of recruiting are you doing, or specifically, why haven't we tried some sort of cadet program with high school students, something? I mean, year after year, we're faced with the same issue, so I think we can be proactive, the economy's not in such good shape. I mean, I'm surprised that we can't find twenty-year-olds that are interested in climbing poles and learning about power.
It was one of the purposes several years ago, of funding the apprentice program, because we couldn't compete to bring them in directly as line workers, so we started the apprentice program to try and bring them in at a lower level and train them and work them up.
How are we doing on that?
We're, we're doing okay, but, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's, it is an ongoing challenge, because we have people of retirement age, we're losing, losing people there too, but we have tried going to schools and trying to get young people interested in, in careers in water and power, not just linemen, but also engineering, and it's, it's a struggle, and-
What schools have you gone to? Have you gone to any occupational centers, community colleges, I mean, there's so many.
Fred, we've tried to, the local high schools in, in this area, and, you know, it's, it's obviously an effort we need to redouble, but-
Well, I'd definitely get a little creative on this one, because they pay good money, and I mean, I'm just surprised, after all these years, we still can't, can't bring people into these line jobs. The occupational centers for sure, and the community colleges, LA Trade Tech, I mean, there's lots of, of training opportunities for similar fields, they may not have a linemen program, but-
These are outstanding jobs for young people, and all it takes is someone who's mechanically inclined, someone who's not afraid of electricity, and not afraid of heights, and you can make a great, great living, so.
What does a lineman make?
We would hire people in as an apprentice, and an apprentice can start at literally forty-five, fifty thousand dollars a year, as an apprentice, and that's a four, four-and-a-half year program, and by the time they make journeyman, they would be up to sixty-five thousand per year. So this is, this is good money.
With benefits and-
With benefits, and-
National holidays, and-
Absolute-
All the goodies that-
Overtime.
That go with a city job.
Mr. Starburt. I've noticed in the same vein, if you, I've noticed on TV the ads for the various trades unions as well, so they're obviously facing a lot of the same issues we are, which is attracting people into these, one of which advertises two retirements that you can get by joining a trades. So I think they're facing the same crunch in the industry that we are.
Edison is doing it.
Yeah, and a lot of it has to do with frankly, the baby boomer curve, and, you know, the curve continues to move along, those of us in the curve, which is most of us up here, are reaching retirement age, and we, there aren't the numbers of workers coming in behind to replace all those jobs, and it's happening at many levels in both the private and the public sector.
And it's chasing, it's chasing bodies, because, you know, we have people retiring, and we do have quite a number of people in the apprenticeship program right now, occasionally we will lose one or two of them to either LA or Edison or something like that, but, you know, we're short at that journey level phase, and that's what, that's when you have someone, that's what takes four or five years to develop, and so it's weird.
The, the MTA was facing this problem trying to find bus operators, and they had great success, as Mr. Quintero mentioned, in partnering up with one or two community colleges, their vocational training, and I'm sure Glendale Community College would be very amenable to working with the city and trying to find a solution to this problem.
They have classes for nurses, they can have classes for this type of work.
I'm sure they can-
And as I talked to the, our previous department head, one of his frustration was that he did hire those people, he did train them, and after they were trained, they left. A lot of them left, and it wasn't just occasional one or two, a lot of them left, and part of it has to do with what other agencies are offering. There are certain trades, whether they be engineers or this type of trades, we need to be compatible with the rest of the guys out there. On this item, I would say that, I just did a quick calculation, if we had just hired the full force, which was another forty-three, and we gave them average of eighty thousand dollars, which is, with benefits and all the stuff, would have ended up about three point eight million dollars, so this is an addition of two point one million, so in my mind, I'm still in the plus category. But sometimes, with some of these numbers, the money is not the only thing, because at one point, you stretch, when there is a major storm, or there is a major, I don't know, catastrophe, everybody else around us, Burbank is going to need their people, Pasadena needs their people, LA W DWP needs theirs, Edison needs theirs, so you're not going to be able to draw from somebody else, you have to depend on your own, and if you don't have enough people to go out there and fix the lines, there's going to be a whole bunch of people out of electricity, and guess whose phone's going to be ringing? And so I think we need to kind of deal with some of these things, and I agree with my colleagues, I think we should go to Glendale College and, and do that, and all due respect to you and, and some of my managements, what I hear from the colleges is, I don't know what kind of outreach you're doing, you need to do a better job, because as I, the kids call me and they say, gee, you know, I like to work in government, and I said, hasn't our city been there, talking to you guys? They have no clue that we're even there. So we need to do a better job when we're there.
We have been doing these things, but, and again, if anyone says that, give them my number.
Mr. Weaver, I have a-
Sounds good, I will.
I just want to comment, my belief, especially within the high school system, is a total lack of counselors. All the emphasis is on getting a college degree. You don't get a college degree, you're worth nothing. But the business trades, the trades where people work with hands, auto mechanics, you go and see how many auto mechanics are in their twenties. They're not, they're gray hair. When they retire out, who's going to even work on your cars? It's not looked at as a profession that makes good money, yet good auto mechanics can make well over a hundred thousand a year.
Absolutely.
But the counselors are not there, the counselors are not leading the kids, every kid is not meant to go to college, and until the schools districts wake up, both at the community college level and the high schools, and start teaching the kids alternatives out there, I don't think you can put all the blame on the cities for not covering every base. True, you try, but there's got to be days where different cities can come out and see, other than college degree, what is out there. I do three graduations a year, and the graduation rate is seventy percent girls, thirty percent guys. I don't know where those guys are going, but they're certainly not going through college. So they're either out there relaxing in their homes, and trying to grow up to get active, or who knows what. So that's a number of factors, but lack of counseling at the high school level's a big one.
Mr. Quintero?
Yeah, well, it's actually a national issue, Dave.
Oh, yeah, sure.
But that's why I'm, you know, mentioning the occupational center- But that's why I'm, you know, mentioning the occupational centers, the community colleges, especially trade tech, Pierce. I mean, these are schools where you specifically have people choosing blue collar careers, electrical type of training, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, that's a natural, and they have placement offices and so that to me is just a natural source to go out and you're not going to necessarily find seventeen or eighteen year olds, you may find nineteen, twenty, twenty-one year olds that are taking these courses.
Okay, thank you.
To work for City of Glendale, don't you have to have some minimum of college degree?
No. Just it depends on the job. If it's a, your basic office job or engineering job, typically we will require bachelor's degree.
So if it's an engineering job, you're going to need to have it because that's the only way you're going to be an engineer.
Yes.
But some of the ads I see, sometimes there is a minimum requirement that you've got to have, you know, at least a bachelor of arts, a B A or A A. So you need to have some kind of a.
Although I can, positions we're talking about here today, the, the prime ones, entry level firefighter, entry level police officer, line workers, I think the minimum requirement is a high school education. Now, to be competitive, people will have more, but generally high school education, minimum education, until you get into professional level positions like engineers and others.
But how many people have we really hired? Yeah, we may not have the actual so-called requirement, but in reality, when you have hundred people competing and out of those hundred people, sixty of them have a college degree, if you don't have one, you're dead meat. And it hasn't changed and I'll tell you, it hasn't changed for the last thirty-three years because I went through the process, it's the same thing. Doesn't matter how smart you are, how much you know, it's that piece of paper that gets you through the door. A lot of people don't get through the door because they don't have that piece of paper. They may be complete idiots, but they got that piece of paper. And so there is a lot to be said about that. We also have a system that gives preferential treatment to the people who actually have a college degree rather than not having one.
Is that true?
That's true.
I'm not sure if we're treading on thin ice with our, stating our civil service requirements. Mr. Howard, are we, are we in trouble by stating fact as to our hiring practices and preference?
Our hiring practices are outlined in job bulletins, job specifications and civil service rules. So whatever.
The statements made here are.
Statement made here won't change that, it may reflect opinions of council members, but it doesn't change the civil service rules nor our specs nor our.
Again, Mr. Mayor, it largely depends on the job that you're applying for. If it's a clerical position, a college degree is pretty much irrelevant unless you've had some type of, you know, an A A degree in, in office management or something like that or you've taken classes in Excel or, or Word or some of the computer classes. Those things are helpful. Again, the majority of our jobs at the yard, maintenance, mechanical, really a college degree is, is not necessary when they're going through the.
A college degree is detrimental actually if you apply for.
Just want to, just want to point out a distinction here. Mr. Doyle keeps referring to, you know, linemen and, and some of those, but although I agree with my colleagues to the left of me here, not politically, but just geographically to the left of me here, related to, related to the need for, you know, being college-bound or, or, or something more vocational, I also agree with Mr. Giuseppe and I know so many people that have come to the city that are, have seen ads or on the website and so on and, and very often when it's, when it's something more than just clerical, it, it does make the distinction about college degree. Don't kid yourself, it's there, it's absolutely there. I have another question though, Mr. Mayor, and it's totally off the subject.
You have the floor.
I know you have one card there and I know you're waiting on that and it's not a priority, but the reason I was going to ask you if, if you would consider hearing that speaker is because sometimes what they're going to raise is something that relates to what we're looking at. And I'm wondering if it's of any use to us to hear what that speaker has to say because some of the questions he may raise, you see the name there, may be answered as we go through this, at least us individually, not necessarily the folks out.
So would the speaker consider being heard? Mr. Allen? We have a, a request, a.
No, no, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm not trying to put Mr. Allen on the spot, that's not what I mean.
I guess would your remarks be pertinent to our discussion at this point or would you still rather hold off till the end of our presentation?
Your remarks are always pertinent to the discussion. That's number one and I would like to hold off until after we hear from the, the presentation on the fire department. Because that dovetails, dovetails into exactly what you're talking about.
Just for clarification, I wasn't trying to put Mr. Allen on the spot, it's just sometimes by the time we get to the, the end of the, of this, which can be a long time sometimes, sometimes the, the points that the speakers are making are somehow lost in a, in a mountain of paperwork and numbers. That was the only reason. Thank you.
And as a general rule, let me invite any speakers out there that if you were intending on speaking on something that is immediately pertinent to our discussion, please step forward and in a study session atmosphere, I'll be happy to take you up when the appropriate time occurs. Mr. Giuseppe.
I have two, I have one comment and another question and I'll wait for the fire department because they have a presentation. I want to say congratulations to the police department. Based on the records, they have reduced their overtime from three point nine million dollars down to two point seven million dollars and even though their numbers has dropped. The other thing is, Mr. City Clerk, how do you justify your sixteen thousand dollar overtime for this year? Is that because of the elections?
Elections is part of it. Also, there was a number of reports that under, you know, the, late reports will cause overtime. My staff has to stay on Thursday evenings to provide the packets for council and staff as part of it, but the bulk of the overtime usually comes every two years during elections.
A question.
Mr. Starbird.
But don't we fund the election? I mean, last, last time in oh four, oh five was a certain amount that we funded in a resolution and then this year we also funded the, in another resolution, which was higher than the oh four, oh five, but don't we cover the election cost in that resolutions?
We do, but there's a number of costs that we can't take into consideration, rising costs of mailings, other costs as far as me being an incoming new city clerk, we had to bring in a consultant, we brought in the predecessor Doris Tweed to help out and to guide me through the process. So there were another number of other issues.
So that's what, I just don't want people to think that I don't put him on the spot.
I appreciate that.
Right, anyone in front of Bob is a target.
No, it's his, his department, yeah, it's his department, yeah, I know. He doesn't get it.
Microphone.
All right, I'm done with this list.
In fact, the more, Mr. Kasakian.
Microphone.
The more time Mr. Kasakian works, the less he gets paid per hour. Right, Artie?
Yes.
Give him more work.
Okay, thank you. And if we're done with the salaries and overtime, I'd like to get into the fire department discussion. If that's appropriate at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Starbird. We've got a PowerPoint that we're going to refer to here. Hopefully most of the slides show up on, on the television for the audience at home. Councilmember Weaver, my remark, my, my late, late father, I was touched by your comments about mechanics. My, my late father used to remind me that he had the greatest of respect for mechanics because in contrast to a doctor who only has to work on two models, the mechanic has to work on many. So that skills, knowledge and ability is extremely important at all, at all levels and oftentimes we, we take for granted those, those vehicles that we drive around and, and put the, the lives of our family in. We've got a PowerPoint we're going to run through, we're going to talk about various components of the fire department and certainly this is always a pleasure for me, being able to share with you the good work of the men and women of the Glendale Fire Department. I might, I might add also, we've, we've had a tremendous amount of recent experience with some, some losses and some saves. We're going to talk a little bit about that. I, I'm going to have Deputy Chief Steve Howard and Deputy Chief Harold Scoggins also present to you various components of the fire department operations as well. Ron Allers is available, Matt Doyle is available and then Bill Fox and Jason Bradford from Internal Audit are also available as we discuss some of the components of the review that's been going on, on fire department overtime. Simply stated, we have a, we have a mission that effectively is very clear and concise and it, I'd learned a long time ago that really the preoccupation of any effective leader should be clarity. If you do nothing else, make sure you have a clear message. If not, there could be catastrophic circumstances, particularly on an emergency. So that's what we do. And then, and in effect, we've coined a simple slogan that says, we help people. And so our preoccupation is really trying to prevent emergencies. That's really the last thing we want to happen. And so we spent a great deal of time in this community, literally working on the prevention of emergency occurrences and we do that in many, many ways. And we were also talking earlier about bringing people into the fire department and I'll correct an earlier speaker that made a comment in reflection of fire department demographics. Over the last year and a half, we have attracted two Armenian firefighters actually through our cadet program. We have joined with the police department and the school district, we run a public safety academy and that runs like a magnet at Hoover and we have been now working for the last year in, in literally bringing people in at what I'll call the farm team. And we transition them through high school, through sophomore, junior and senior years, move them into a program at Glendale College and if they so desire, we even have a matriculation agreement with Cal State L A and Cal State Long Beach. And at the same time concurrently, we bring them in as explorers and cadets. Both of the individuals again that we brought in that are Armenians, they're Glendale residents and they came up through the cadet program, a very effective way to certainly better reflect the community and certainly provide outstanding service.
Are they firefighters now?
Yes, they are. Yes, they are.
How's our numbers with the Korean community?
We also, within the last year and a half, hired our, our first Korean firefighter. Interestingly enough, I, I think I've spoken about him before, he also Glendale resident, Hoover graduate, went to Cal Berkeley, is a graduate engineer, had a deep love and passion for firefighting and wanted to become a firefighter and we, we hired him as, as well. And again, that's made a, a real difference in the community and providing service. But I can tell you, each and every one of our men and women have a great deal of passion for what they do and certainly will try to resolve any type of emergency. We've spent literally years trying to develop a, a complex system that relies on a lot of fire prevention techniques. Chief Howard's going to share with you a couple of recent fires that were very successful in terms of saves. Those, those took really the, the will of prior city councils to effectuate an ordinance that retrofitted fire sprinklers in all buildings four stories or more in height. None of what we do on a daily basis is really by accident. It's planned, it's purposeful, it's intentional. We have an extremely complex system here in Glendale and, and very much a unique array of hazards that we look at and, and we're forced to protect. And it certainly, it's allowed us to develop a rapid response effort because that's the real, when things fail and they do, then we've got to respond rapidly. Fond of saying that, hey, big fires start small, we're experts at trying to keep them small. That's in everyone's best interest. And so when there is a failure on the preventative means through a combination of, of education and work within the community at all levels and, and built-in, the use of built-in fire protection systems, we respond. And we've got an outstanding cadre of firefighters that are at the ready. We maintain twenty-four, seven coverage of sixty firefighters for the two hundred and seven thousand people that live in this community. And again, that array of complex, extremely challenging and unique hazards that are present. Let's see here. I've often said that fire protection really is risk management and we use this combination of prevention and education and then balance that with the necessary resources and really focus on that time of arrival. Response time is really the key indicator. And historically, just as you have chosen to make a specific example of, of, of the community and taking care of it with varied levels of services here and even our investment portfolio on our reserves, you've also taken that approach with fire protection. Similar to Pasadena, we maintain the same staffing levels that the City of Pasadena does and in essence, those sixty people, that's our first line of defense. Those are our sentinels. They're out there really to take on any task at hand on a twenty-four, seven basis. And the costs associated with that, as we're going to go into details, are really what you're going to find is ninety-five percent of the cost of what we're talking about in terms of overtime is staffing coverage. That's what it is. There's a very small percentage of hours and related dollars and in fact, you'll see right, right down to the details about what we've been able to accomplish with really a small amount of overtime for what I'll call discretionary activity. We do not consider the staffing of the fire stations with our firefighters discretionary. And so on a twenty-four, seven basis, we do everything we can to assure that there are sixty trained, professional firefighters available to meet any task, whether it's a metro link train derailment, whether it's a roaring brush fire, whether it's a high-rise fire. We've got some of the densest residential areas in all of the state of California. We meet those challenges day in and day out. I'd like to say if we were a business, we'd, we'd have a fantastic bottom line as, and we'll go into our loss statistics, but they're outstanding and they're head and shoulders above our neighbors. We get it done and we get it done in, in really a more effective manner than other fire departments and that's something I think has been purposeful and planned. It's an, it's an intended act and it's intended staffing. We didn't just show up last week. We've, we're buoyed actually by a fantastic combination of other municipal services, our public safety partners, police, public works, G W P. And really the whole system is complete and complex and it's interwoven so that we have this fantastic combination of really prevention and response resources. These are loss statistics from oh five, oh six. Civilian fire fatalities, fire injuries, one each, two point seven million dollars in property loss and one point one million in content loss. We find any loss unacceptable and I can tell you, there have been public officials that have made comments over the years that some degree of loss was acceptable. I'll tell you, we take that as a personal challenge. There is no amount of loss that's acceptable in this community and we do everything we can to either prevent it or minimize it. Again, protecting two hundred and seven thousand residents and seventeen billion dollars in assessed value. Again, this is your insurance policy, a combination of your, your prevention and response capability. This is a breakdown and for the purposes of comparison, I've showed you Pasadena and Burbank and the numbers of fires. You can see that actual fires, even though Burbank has half the population, is nearly the number, number of fires. Our medical calls there at twelve thousand, six hundred are the predominant calls for service in this community. It's a little over eighty percent and our totals there, just about fifteen thousand for oh five, oh six. That's very significant. Pasadena's population is about fifty thousand people less than ours. Fifty thousand people less, less than ours, probably maybe sixty thousand people less than ours. I think it's about a hundred and forty-six.
Chief, I have a quick question. How do you define service? What are those calls?
Service calls could be like we experienced at my house earlier this year. We had a flood. Water pipe broke underneath the bathroom sink. That's the first time we've had to call the fire department. They arrived on scene promptly and assisted us with water removal and did an outstanding job and actually lessened the amount of damage was there. That would be an example of a service.
And also hazard it like the hillsides, I've noticed firefighters in the hillsides looking for brush.
That's, that's a, that's a form of non-emergency work and inspections and it began, it's a. That's a form of non-emergency work and inspections, and it began, it's a preventative tool in getting really--
Right, but that would qualify under the service call?
No, unless they're -- you know, we've gone everything from deer in backyards creating problems, you know, there could be a tree that's fallen into a yard, a problem with a mud or a slide, that's an example of that type of problem, some hazard.
Specifically, the firefighters that go into the hillside to look for brushes, is that part of that service call, or that's a different category?
That'd be a different category. One of the things that we do, and as you can imagine, and actually, it works nicely with this, we have a physician in town that has made an anonymous donation of rescue masks for dogs and cats and animal rescues. You know, I won't go as far as saying it's the cat in the trees type scenario, but there are rescues that go on, and I've been mouth the snout in my experience with a German shepherd pulled out of a fire. I could tell you, I was probably a little concerned about him biting my face, but we brought that dog around, and now we've got some masks that we're about to release to the department to help in that way and really effectuate that. Another example, and again, I brought up the broken water main, but it would be, you know, any type of thing wires down, we get, you know, literally in wind conditions, we'll go call to call. They're not back at the neighborhood fire station, but they're literally going call to call for wires down and then working in conjunction with GWP and Public Works to best affect that outcome.
Chris, recently when Whole Foods had a sprinkler line break as a result of, I guess, electrical conduit came down, was that our call?
That's another good example, and literally, what had occurred there, as Mr. Starber's pointing out, is the Whole Foods grocery store here is a large electrical conduit that was attached to the ceiling in a storage area, and for some reason, it became dislodged, and it came down with a lot of weight and broke the sprinkler, fire sprinkler line, and then we had thousands of gallons of water. I think the Fire Department was there about six hours trying to ensure restoration of the business back to normalcy and removing all of that water, kind of like our house, but on a much larger scale. But I can tell you, the care of which they do that and the understanding that the most important thing is that restoration of business and bringing back normalcy, that's what they're trying to do. The salvage efforts that they do to try to minimize harm and minimize damage are extremely important. We talked a little bit about this, but you all know it driving around, but we really, firefighters, they look through a different set of goggles, a different lens when they see the hazards present. Obviously, the dense urban area that we live in, the traffic congestion, all present some problems. With cooperation of Public Works, we're about to go online with several intersections in the downtown area with a preemption system. I can tell you, that's taken 17 years to pull that all together, and hopefully, we can best affect a favorable outcome. Our critical times are really response, and trying to reduce those to minimum is really where seconds count, and Chief Howard and Chief Scoggins are going to talk to you a little bit more about that. Plus, Glendale is just, it's really fascinating from a professional challenge, looking at what we call our wildland-urban interface, where we literally have over 7,500 acres of wildland between the San Rafael Hills, the Verdugo Mountains, and the San Gabriel Mountains, right up to the edge of the Angeles National Forest. And I can tell you, there is no greater threat in this immediate area than that brush. It's at historical lows.
How many acres did you say?
It's over 7,500 acres of wildland within Glendale. And that threat is so significant right now. We're at the ready, we're concerned, we've done a lot of pre-planning, we're preparing, there's training activities, great coordination with our neighbors, because obviously, we're really limited. Even though our insurance policy, our risk management, calls for 60 people on duty, you know very clearly that some fires just in the past four years have taxed us well beyond our capability and have actually brought resources from beyond this region. And that can certainly happen again, and it's also not really a question of if. It is going to happen. I'm personally, I'm very concerned about that now. The brush and the fuel moisture content that we measure on a weekly basis is at historical lows. It normally is at about 125% of moisture content right now. It's below 50. Essentially, the fire season is determined by evaluating a whole complex number of issues, but mainly looking at the vegetation and its condition, is about three months ahead of schedule. If we experience any degree of Santa Ana winds, and frankly, even without them, as we've seen recently with Griffith Park and some other serious fires, we can expect some tragic results. We'll do the absolute best we can. You've got a Fire Department here that's really without compare, but we do have limitations. And I continue to be concerned about that. We're coordinating a large effort right now with other city departments to ensure that we're fortunate. You may have seen, we had a fire here last week, and it involved a small brush fire on the hilltop. We're trying to narrow down the actual cause of that, but we were fortunate to be conducting a training exercise and had a Los Angeles City water dropping helicopter that was actually participating with us in some training exercises with Burbank and Pasadena, and they saw the smoke and were en route and made a drop, and it made all the difference in the world. Had that not happened, I probably wouldn't be standing here. But it's, so we've had some good fortune, but it's not going to always be that way. We've got a unique situation with the demographic diversity in town. We've worked consistently with all of really the, both the different groups in town and certainly have, I think, a broad understanding of the cultural differences, their expectations about service. We've been entrenched in various communities. We've used some good tools, I think, to give them a broad understanding of the 911 system. We've introduced a program, and actually, at the time, Councilmember Yusefian was the mayor, and even worked with us on providing some translation that we utilize in terms of training the firefighters so that they can better understand Spanish, Armenian, and Korean languages, so that we use that as a point of entry when we go into a room, and we've got some phrases that we utilize.
I'll let you know, I just did the Armenian section. I didn't speak the language.
Spanish.
Spanish and Korean wouldn't be my forte.
But all of that comes with differing expectations, and some of the challenges is, and we talked about this earlier in terms of recruitment, you know, firefighting isn't necessarily looked at as the most desirable profession within some cultures and some backgrounds. And so turning that around, and I think that's why we've used some effective recruitment methods in the community, is really going to be successful, but it's something that doesn't happen overnight. This is a snapshot of our budget, '06-'07, and you can see the categories here, broken down. The large group here is Fire Operations, which essentially, the firefighters staffing our nine stations, and Chief Howard is going to go into further detail with that. You can see the total general fund cost is $34 million. And then where I think this Fire Department is unique and has been extremely successful, you know, I've been here nearly 21 years. When I came here, nearly 98% of our budget was reliant on the general fund. If you go down to the bottom of that chart, you'll see less revenue activities, and that's an approximate figure, but it's about $15 million of offsetting revenue, nearly 30% of our budget, and I can show you on this, let's see if I can do this here.
What does that mean, less revenue?
There it is. This is a breakdown to really show you the source of the funding, the various means. And so our general fund is actually only 70% of the Fire Department budget. We've done as much as we can to leverage the department's costs and the service we provide to this community, including revenue from other communities, Lockenada, Flint Ridge, Burbank, household hazardous waste, the Verdugo system, which is extremely successful, 11 communities working together, contract cities, there are, of which there are eight, are actually paying the city of Glendale to provide contract services there, the paramedic fees, which we do a great job in recouping about 80% of all of our fees there, and grants. The city's been extremely successful in garnering literally millions of dollars in grants, basically from Homeland Security. So that's something that I think is very unique about this Fire Department. You won't find that in either one of our neighbors on either side.
Chris?
Yes.
So the total general fund budget is $34 million?
That's correct.
And what you're saying is, out of that $34 million, 15 million of that is?
These special funds that are identified below.
So the cost to the general fund is actually less than $34 million? It's more like--
No.
Forty-eight minus 15.
It's really the 48 minus the 14, 7.
Okay, so the real--
Mr. Starber. I'm sorry, the total fire operation, which spans everything from paramedic services, suppression, prevention, hazmat, MRS, disaster preparedness, those programs are in various funds of the city. You see them listed down at the bottom. Fire Grant Fund, Fire Paramedic Fund, Fire Communications, ISIS Fund, Hazardous Disposal, and the General Fund. The total fire operation is $49 million, just a hair under $49 million. They raised through those activities $15 million in revenues, leaving the general fund cost a net of about $34 million.
That's right.
So you get roughly $49 million worth of fire operation for $34 million.
That's correct. Thank you.
Spread over six different funds of the city.
Correct. I'm going to have Chief Howard now transition. We're going to talk a little bit about emergency operations and what we do on a data basis in terms of coverage. But I can tell you, and I speak for every man and woman on the Glendale Fire Department, they provide this service with great passion. They take an oath, we all take an oath, to not only serve, but to protect members of this community and visitors of this community, even if it means risking our own lives. We take that very seriously, and I can tell you, as I mentioned earlier, you'll find this Fire Department is really without compare. Thank you. Chief Howard?
Thank you, Chief. Good morning, Mayor Najarian, members of the council. The cornerstone of our delivery system is the neighborhood fire stations. We have nine of them, as you see on the graph here, one up in Lock Rosetta, Station 28, happens to also be a paramedic assessment unit. Dropping down into Montrose, Station 29, where there's an engine, a truck, and a rescue ambulance coming on down south to Station 24 by the college, where we happen to have our hazardous material unit out of there also. Up in Chevy Chase Canyon is our Station 23. That's a paramedic assessment unit. And we come across North Brand, Station 26, has an engine, a truck, and our rescue ambulance also there. I'm going to cross to Station 25 over at Chevy Chase in Verdugo, has another rescue ambulance, and then down to our main station by the Glendale Galleria, engine, truck, and a rescue ambulance. Further south on South Brand is Station 22 with our newest rescue ambulance and an engine, and then out on the west side, Station 27 with an engine there. I also failed to mention that Station 29 in Montrose is where we keep our urban search and rescue unit. But out of these--
Chief--
Yes?
What is R-A, P-A-U, and--
The R-A, the triangle there indicates that at that station, and we have five of those stations, there'll be a rescue ambulance.
Okay, R-A stands for rescue--
Rescue ambulance.
And P-A-U stands for?
For Paramedic Assessment Unit. And we have two designations, two of the stations, Station 23 and Station 28, they are staffed continuously with a paramedic. The other stations can also be paramedic assessment units, depending on whether we have a paramedic working that particular day.
Okay.
Correct. But out of these nine neighborhood fire stations, really the cornerstone of our delivery system, both from the emergency response standpoint, but also from the preventative standpoint. Talked a little bit about the inspections on the hillsides and looking at the brush or vegetation management program. That happens out of the neighborhood station. The inspections to the local businesses that are there, the inspections for the multifamily units, they all happen out of the neighborhood station. The firefighters are in the community on a continuous basis to be prepared, to prevent, and when they do have an emergency, to get there as quickly as they can. Response time does count. Whoa. Did I do that?
No.
Ron, can you back? Did you get that? Yeah, one more forward. Thanks. Okay, there we go. National standards. We've heard much about performance standards and performance measures and outcomes, and there is a national standard for performance measures. In fact, the National Fire Protection Association, and for those that aren't familiar with who that is or what that is, I took off their website, and let me read this to you real quickly. "The mission of the international nonprofit NFPA is to reduce the worldwide burden of fire and other hazards on the quality of life by providing and advocating consensus codes and standards, research, training, and education. NFPA membership totals more than 81,000 individuals from around the world and more than 80 national trade and professional organizations. Established in 1896, NFPA serves as the world's leading advocate of fire prevention and is an authoritative source on public safety. In fact, NFPA's 300 codes and standards influence every building, process, service, design, and installation in the United States, as well as many of those used in other countries. NFPA's focus on true consensus has helped the association's code development process earn accreditation from the American National Standards Institute. In addition to that, the NFPA standards are adopted by the federal and the state governments, and therefore, they do become law for us in certain instances." That's who the NFPA is, NFPA 1710, one of the standards, and in particular, the one we want to focus a little bit on, because it gives us performance measures and outcomes for the type of service we provide in the emergency site. And this standard is the deployment of fire suppression operations, emergency medical operations, and special operations for the public by career Fire Departments. Response times. There is a standard there that says, within five minutes, 90% of the time, Fire Department's first unit should be on scene for both an EMS and a fire resource. The obvious outcome to that is, the faster we can get there, as the statement is down below, the less severe the injuries, the less property damage, and the reduced likelihood of a conflagration. Response times are very, very important to us. How are we doing with those response times? On the fireside, we are getting there within five minutes 68.6% of the time. That's the highest in our area. Area C includes out into the San Gabriel Valley there. We haven't met the 90%, but we're working on that, and we're trying to get better at our response times. One of the things Chief Gray spoke about was the traffic preemptive system that we'll use to hopefully help us move through traffic faster. On the medical side, we're getting there within five minutes at 79.6% of the time. San Marino and South Pass have a better response in those areas than we do, but we're working in that also.
Mr. Quintero. Chief, I assume that also varies with the particular location, right? Obviously, in Montrose, you can get there quicker than you might out of 25 or 21.
That's correct. That's correct. Again, it's 90% of the time, and there's traffic, there's location that we're responding from and where the incident is.
Chief, let me ask you a question. To what extent do our speed humps affect these figures?
The speed humps will reduce our response time. We have to slow down in the same manner that they're designed to slow traffic, and we understand that. We try and work closely with the neighborhoods to ensure that there are not too many, but we understand the traffic issues that are there.
Mr. Weaver, then, Mr. Yusefian.
I'd say, in past years, Mr. Najarian, we've put in the speed bumps, but some of them with certain width that our trucks go between.
Correct.
That's where you see the break. We've also got designated streets where there are no speed bumps so that you can move into certain areas faster, right?
That's correct. That's our primary response routes. We work with traffic engineering, and we want to ensure that the main arteries that we would use don't have any of the speed humps or speed lumps that you're speaking about.
I just want to clarify, Area C covers how big an area?
That's 11 cities. It goes all the way out to Monrovia and then drops down south to Alhambra and Monterey Park, encompasses all the cities within there.
And the second bullet up there refers to that Area C again.
That's correct.
Mr. Yusefian.
Chief, the issue of the 80% for EMS, the reason South Pasadena and Marino have, San Marino have a better-- Marino have a better number, is it because it's a smaller area? Or is it because they have more ambulances available?
No.
Because I still did not, in the plan you showed, for example, northwest Glendale did not have an ambulance there.
Correct.
So, would that, if there was an ambulance there, would our EMS numbers be better?
Let me clarify that. Let me come back to the first part of the question. One is that both San Marino and South Pasadena have an ambulance, and the area that that ambulance serves is a smaller area than our five ambulances serve on an average. So, they are able to have a quicker response time.
Okay.
Okay, that's one component.
Geographically, that's one of the reasons.
That's one of the reasons. The other aspect on the five-minute response time, it's not that the first ambulance needs to get there, it's that the first arriving fire department unit needs to get there. It could be an engine company, and that would meet the requirement for the ninety percent. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. Why do we send a rescue ambulance and an engine to an incident?
Okay. Thanks, Chief.
Emergency response, our daily staffing of sixty personnel. How do we staff the... We have two basic configurations, fire engines and fire trucks. We've got the nine engines, the three trucks, a captain and engineer, the engineer's the one who drives, and two firefighters on each of those. We have five paramedic rescue ambulances. Each of those is staffed by two firefighter paramedics and one battalion command team. One of the questions that we get fairly often is, why do we have a staff assistant that's on that? And actually, we do that, and it's required by NFPA seventeen-ten. Down there, you see supervisory chief officer shall have a staff aide, they changed the name, deployed to them for purposes of incident management and accountability at emergency incidents. That's one of the roles that that staff assistant fills, in addition to being assistant for the management of, that's one chief officer who oversees all fifty-eight other people, and the twelve companies that are out there, and the five rescue ambulances. So, there's a tremendous amount of work that needs to take place, and that's why we have the staff assistant.
Chief, there have been allegations made that the job of the firefighter staff assistant is mostly to drive the battalion chief around.
No.
So, could you explain?
No, that's... They go as a team, that's why it's listed as a team.
So, what are some of the requirements of that firefighter assistant to the battalion chief? What does he do?
At the scene of an incident, that staff assistant will track all of the resources that are on scene. He'll write it down, he'll write down what their assignment is, because it's an accountability issue, it's a safety issue, for us to make sure that we know exactly where everyone is at during an incident. That's the emergency side, he does that, in addition to helping the battalion chief manage the incident, call for additional resources, talk to Verdugo, there's, you can only talk once, or you can only say one thing at a time, and when you need to get a lot of things out, when you have two people, they're able to do that.
Okay. Mr. Quintero.
Is that staff assistant, or I would assume that staff assistant is generally someone who has many years of experience, who could eventually be promoted to be a captain, or who generally fills those staff assistant positions?
Those are firefighters, and they do get special training for the position that they have there. Generally, our staff assistants stay in the position for several years. It's somewhat of a complex job, both on the emergency side and the non-emergency side. They are the ones that also manage the staffing of the department, hence where the overtime is going to come in, we're going to talk a little bit more about that later, but we do have a system for hiring, and it's fairly complex, and they manage that. So, they stay for a while. Yes, they do promote, they promote out to becoming paramedics, becoming engineers or captains.
Do you have that battalion command team go to every single incident, or do you generally have them go there when there is a major incident?
Generally, they'll respond when there's two or more companies that are going to...
At the site, okay.
At the site. That's a fairly good generation.
Need for coordination.
Yes, they do the coordination, they do the tracking, they make sure that the companies are operating in a safe manner. Some recent fires that we've had in the last six weeks, one on three fifteen West Lamita. This is a four-story apartment building. It has an enclosed hallways. This particular building was built in the thirties, and some of you are very familiar with this style of apartments. We have hundreds of these in town. They range from two stories to four stories. This particular one, because it's a four-story, it was required to be retrofitted with a fire sprinkler system, and then back in the early seventies, the hallways, the separation in the stairwells between the hallways was retrofitted with a fire door to prevent fire spread from the first floor going all the way up to the fourth floor. The fire came in, and we had a four-minute response time, so we met our five-minute goal on this. It happened to be a kitchen fire. It was extinguished by one sprinkler head, and there was no injuries. Very successful implementation of the whole fire protection system that we've designed over the years. This is the picture of the building here, you might be familiar with it on the corner there of Central and Lamita. Second one, five twelve South Glendale. You may know this one as the Normity. Again, another four-story, thirty-unit apartment, similar type of construction with enclosed hallways. The enclosed hallway type of construction is of great concern for firefighters, because what can happen, and usually does happen, when a fire in one unit starts, the occupant leaves, and many times, they leave that door open. And that fire quickly transitions into the hallway, and it can trap those that are in on that floor, and sometimes will have occupants, because the building ventilation system, it doesn't have one per se, isn't that great, they will prop open that fire door from one floor to the next to help the air, the cooler air come in and the hot air leave, and we have a great potential for fire to spread, even though we do have the fire doors. The thing that is really critical, especially for the four-story or more, is the retrofit fire sprinkler systems. This one, we had a three-minute response time. It was a heater fire, extinguished by one sprinkler, and there was no injuries, although there were two young children in that apartment when that fire came in. You may have seen this one on South Glendale. The third one, we were not as fortunate, over on Sinclair, just off of Chevy Chase. Single-family resident, the resident did not have a fire sprinkler system. We did have a very good response time, four minutes. Came in, I forgot the exact time, somewhere around three o'clock in the morning. It was a kitchen fire. It was extinguished by firefighters, but there was one fatality. This is a picture of the building, you can see the unit was upstairs, downstairs was a garage storage area. Here's our firefighters, they've just completed ventilating the roof. The fire had gone from the kitchen into the attic, and they're coming down off the roof. The occupant was rescued as quickly as we could get there and performed a search, brought him out to our ambulance. This happens to be right across the street from Glendale Adventist Hospital. But in this picture, you could maybe pick out, there's actually four firefighter or firefighter paramedics that are working on this one victim, doing everything they can to save his life. Unfortunately, it didn't turn out that his life was able to be saved. Another recent fire where we assisted with our auto aid fire agreement with the Los Angeles City Fire Department, across the way, across San Fernando on Brazil Street, it's a commercial warehouse with a car storage lot. The interesting aspect of this is that our fire investigation unit, they did the follow-up investigation, and actually, there was an eighty-one-count arson indictment against a Glendale homeless man on this. You may have seen this on the television, but it was, I can't remember exactly how many cars, but a lot of cars burned up.
Chrysler.
Seventy-nine vehicles burned on this. Yeah.
Does the gas explode in a car fire, from the gas tank?
It generally doesn't explode. What will happen is the gas tank will rupture and the fuel will leak out, so it's not quite like an explosion.
Scott liked the movies?
No.
I might add on, this is a good demonstration of why sprinklers in concrete parking structures, I've had so many conversations with developers who wonder why we make them sprinkler, a concrete parking structure, that obviously, you're not worried about the structure, you're worried about the automobiles, the people who are inside the structure, but that's a good demonstration.
Oh, very much so, and especially the below-grade parking structures. Okay? You get in there, and anytime you have a vehicle fire, you see the color of that smoke that's coming right from that vehicle, and it can fill up that below-grade parking structure, or even an above-grade that has quite a few cars in there, fill up with smoke, and you don't want to be in that environment.
All that plastic.
Correct, Star Ford stored many of their vehicles over here. Okay, well, we have a hundred and eighty firefighters, the sixty per platoon. We have nineteen dispatch-related personnel that run Verdugo. Can't say enough good things about Verdugo. We'll talk a little bit about their performance in a moment. Twenty-three prevention personnel that work in our plan check area, they work in the more difficult types of building inspections, more technical in nature, and we have twenty-one support personnel that range all the way from secretarial assistants or clerical to our mechanical maintenance. Mechanical maintenance folks are doing a wonderful job, in fact, even expanding out the type of work we're able to do there, and contracting with some of the local areas to do work on their fire apparatus also.
Are the prevention personnel part of the one-eighty, or they're in addition?
They are in addition.
And are they considered to be firefighters, or they're civilian?
No, they are civilian.
They're civilian.
Again, you can see, we got a hundred and eighty...
Jeff Halbert at...
Correct.
He's considered to be a civilian?
That's correct.
Personnel? Okay, so he's not a firefighter?
Correct. Of our hundred and eighty, we have forty-seven paramedics. So, we have our paramedic, five paramedic ambulances that are staffed all the time, but we have a few extra, and I shouldn't call them extra, we have a few paramedics that have promoted. They were firefighter paramedics, and now they may be a fire captain or a fire engineer. They're still paramedics, and when they're on a fire company, and they arrive on scene at, whether it's a fire or a medical incident, they will use their paramedic skills in the best way possible.
So, out of the hundred and eighty, forty-seven of them are paramedics?
That's correct.
But they're firefighters first, paramedic second?
Their company...
Or vice versa?
That's correct.
Okay.
Related resources, Verdugo Fire Dispatch, they dispatched fifty-eight thousand incidents last year, just do a wonderful job. The whole Area C is who they dispatch for. Again, that ranges all the way out to Monrovia and South, to Alhambra and Monterey Park and all the cities that come into play there. It's a great cost savings, and the type and quality of their work is just outstanding. Very, very few errors. Wonderful. Fire prevention and environmental management, again, you're probably familiar with the Environmental Management Center, where we collect our household hazards, waste in small businesses, household waste. We have our public education and information, along with emergency services. We do the CERT training, we're implementing the Fire Corps, public education reaches out into the schools, provide our junior fire program, been going for over fifty years now, just a great program. Support services, that would be primarily our mechanical maintenance or shop, but there's some additional work that's done, such as looking on special projects, maybe some types of construction projects or some technical projects. Some of the special resources we have, talked about the urban search and rescue apparatus, we got that on a grant, didn't cost the city anything. That was a wonderful grant we were able to pursue. Not only did we purchase the vehicle, we've been able to purchase the equipment, and we've been able to send the firefighters to training, and some very specific and special training to perform technical rescues. Hazardous material apparatus, we got that on a partial grant, the other part, we used funds from the Southern California Gas Company and purchased the rest of it. Our air utility has a lighting component to it, but it replaces, refills our air bottles at fires. Water tenders, we have two of them. One of them is owned by the Office of Emergency Services, it's owned by the state, but it is used and operated by local government. And so, we have one water tender from OBS, and we have one in partnership with Glendale Water and Power.
What are those things to the average person? These are water tankers?
That's correct. Two thousand gallons of water on a big truck.
Okay, because I did see one of these, I think it's something else in tonight's agenda for the cemetery.
Well, that's different.
That's a different, it's much smaller.
That's very small. These are big.
Yeah. Okay, so, you carry large amounts? How many gallons of water do you carry?
About two thousand.
Two thousand gallons of water, so you can carry, just in case you need it someplace?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, get into some staffing issues. Again, back to performance measures and outcomes. NFPA seventeen-ten talks about this. Let me drop down to the second bullet there. Basic firefighting companies, we're looking at an engine company now, including search and rescue, shall be staffed with a minimum of four on-duty personnel. In jurisdictions that have some high hazard occupancies, high incident frequencies, those companies may need to be staffed with five or six. We need to be reasonable, we need to be prudent, we need to make wise risk management decisions on staffing. We believe that we have. The community has significant risks, and we believe that the four on-duty personnel is an appropriate staffing level for our engine companies.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
There's been arguments made that you're going to send two fire trucks anyway, in most cases, we do, and if you have three on each, that adds to six. So, why, how many incidences, you send only a single fire truck?
The primary incidents that we'll send a single fire engine would be like a car fire, they would be like a fire alarm where we're investigating some type of fire activity.
Okay.
But any type of structure fire, we're not going to send just one.
Okay, so you send two?
Well, we'll send more than two. In fact, we have a slide on that.
Right. So, then the argument that you make that we need to have five or six on duty, because we do have high hazard, wouldn't that be met, that criteria be met by sending more than one fire trucks? Or you're talking about five or six need to be on one truck, so a total of ten to fifteen?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I probably wasn't as clear. The NFPA standard, can you go back one more? The standard itself for a basic engine company is four on-duty staffing. If a community has special hazards, or they have an unusual high fire call load, the recommendation is to go to five or six. We believe that four on our engine companies is an appropriate staffing level. We're not recommending the five or six.
Okay, so, the requirement isn't what you have at the site, the requirement is how many you have onboard, on the engine?
The reason that the NFPA standard has it worded like this is because what you're suggesting can take place, but the efficiency that will happen for that company when it arrives on scene, in addition to some safety standards, and we'll look at those also, will make the company less efficient. They're only able to do a singular task at a time, whereas when we have four people on a company, we're able to do multiple tasks at the same time, and our efficiency level is much, much greater. And there's been study after study that will point this out. It's somewhat of a no-brainer, though, because the more people that you have, the faster you're going to get the job done, and in this particular case, time is of the essence. And time, whether it's at a fire call or it's at a medical call...
I just wanted to, I just wanted to understand what the NFPA standard was about. It wasn't what's on the scene, it's about the number of personnel on the truck itself.
That is what this standard is saying. Next type of company is the truck company. And again, those are the ones that do primary work, such as forcible entry or ventilation, search and rescue, aerial operations for water delivery and rescue, and so forth.
Wait a second. We don't have corps? Oh, we lost our...
We lost it. Okay. Okay. Again, back on the truck companies, the staffing level that the NFPA standard is recommending, again, is four persons on duty. Fire company operations, touched on this already. The standard says, "An early, aggressive, and offensive primary interior attack on a working fire where feasible is usually the most efficient strategy to reduce the loss of life and property damage." More on the operations. The standard also indicates that there needs to be an initial rapid intervention crew. The rapid intervention crew is related to the OSHA two-in-two-out rule, and what that requires is that anytime firefighters enter in an atmosphere that is dangerous to health, there's required to be two people, if there's two that goes in, there's required to be two that are on the outside, in the event that something goes wrong, something goes bad, and that they can go in and rescue those people. So, part of our staffing allows us to have two that go... So part of our staffing allows us to have two that go in and two that remain out without waiting for another company to arrive on scene. In addition to that, we have the state mutual aid system. When we respond outside of the community and go to various parts in the state, we take four firefighters with us. And when outside agencies come into Glendale for the types of resources or engine companies that we're looking for, they bring four with them also. So it's a mutual aid system that has four people on each company. Typical fire response, about 11.5% of our incidents are fire responses, and it depends on what is called in as to what our response will be. It's a measured response. If we have flames or smoke, we're gonna send a full assignment that would include three engines, two trucks, a rescue ambulance, and our battalion command team. If it's an alarm only, or it's a vehicle fire, we would send only one engine company. So again, we wanna measure this. We want to be appropriate with the resources that we're given, because we do have multiple incidents that happen at the same time. And when that takes place, we're required to send a company from a further distance. That's one of the reasons why we're not meeting that 90%, five-minute response time within 90%. One of the reasons is because we have multiple incidents that happen at the same time.
Can those three engines, two trucks, rescue ambulance, all emanate from one station?
No.
Or do you have to pull them from different?
There are multiple stations. Again, it depends on what the configuration is at each station. At Station 21, again, by the gallery, that has one engine, one truck, a rescue ambulance, and a battalion command team that operates out of there. So to make up the additional truck and the additional two engines that we need, those will come from two separate stations.
Chief, I'm curious, how and where is that decision made?
That decision is made with the dispatcher, based upon what information the caller gives them.
So you've got protocols for dispatchers that indicate how much and from where they'll pull equipment and staff?
Very extensive protocols. We're actually, for this purpose, we're just trying to describe the basic. There's, it's far more complex than this. EMS response, 82% of our incidents, we do send an engine and a rescue ambulance. Frequently, remember, we have more engine companies than we do rescue ambulances. Frequently, the engine arrives first. And the majority of time, that engine has a paramedic on it. And so they're able to start some advanced life support measures. They're gonna get there quicker. In the worst-case scenario, the person is not breathing, their heart isn't beating, and we're able to do CPR on them and to open that airway.
Question. Why does an engine get there first? Is it because the engine's bigger, people stop for that engine?
No, it's actually based on location. And I'll give you an example. Let's take Chevy Chase Canyon, Station 23, just an engine company. That engine will respond in the immediate area, but the closest rescue ambulance is down at Chevy Chase in Verdugo.
Right. Let's, let's take one that, let's take Montrose. It also has an ambulance.
Correct.
So where you have ambulance and an engine, would you send both ambulance and the engine? Or would you just send ambulance?
No, we will send both.
Okay, and who, which one will get there first?
They actually go together, but the way they drive is the engine drives first. It does clear the traffic better than the ambulance. It is bigger, and it's easier to see the lights.
Just in case somebody doesn't stop, you know?
Well, we avoid those, but...
I know, but...
We would encourage people, pull to the right.
I do see people with an engine coming, and instead of slowing down, pulling over, they actually speed off and try to cut in front of them.
Numerous times.
I don't know. We could have...
They don't quite understand. In addition to arriving sooner, why do we need six people on scene? Well, for a simple type of incident, maybe somebody cut their finger, you don't need six people for that. But for the complex incidents, and actually the majority of incidents that we go on, we need more than two people. And some of the reasons we have listed here, if we're gonna remove somebody from the second floor, third floor, and we're going downstairs, two people are not going to be enough to remove the person in a timely manner. We've got full arrests where we need, well, actually, you saw the picture of the fire victim in the ambulance? You didn't see him in the ambulance, but you saw four firefighters. They were all working to save his life. Now, that didn't include somebody to drive that ambulance, and it didn't include somebody to oversee their operation, the fire captain that's taking place. The six is a very reasonable number for us to have on a medical incident. The calls are not always accurate of what's happening. Somebody may feel, not feel well, but by the time that the fire company or rescue ambulance arrives on scene, they may have had a heart attack and stopped breathing. In the event that we get there and we don't need an engine or an RA, then we let them go, let them go back into service. And they're gonna go back into service to do more of the preventative work, do more of the preparation for the next emergency.
Or go to another call.
Or go to another call. Now, Chief Scoggins is gonna talk about our scheduling and how all that works, and how is it that we do the staffing to meet the need, the emergency response need, and the preventative activities that we do?
Thank you, Chief Howard. Good morning, Mary Najarian, members of the council. Hope you took all that in. Now, we're gonna, we're gonna get to the numbers part of the operation to really try to give you a clear understanding of what our overtime or staffing is for the organization. Chief Howard explained the three platoons of 60 firefighters per platoon pretty clear. Each platoon works a continuous 24-hour shift. What's made up in that shift? I think Mr. Quintero asked the question about the VMP inspections. Who does those inspections? The fire companies and the stations do those inspections. They go on the emergency calls, they do the training, they do things for, pretty much, it's not a nine-to-five day as in the regular business world. Often, the firefighters are up late into the evening or late into the night, taking care of business that took place early in the day, as well as going on calls throughout the day in all times of the night. Just to try to clear up some of that, because we've heard some comments in the past about, you know, what takes place in a firefighter's schedule. Okay? Each platoon works nine shifts in a 27-day rotation. And if you can visualize 10 shifts a month, that's a little easier to understand. And, but for the purposes of payroll, it's a 216-hour total in a 27-day cycle. Now, firefighter works approximately 2,916 hours per year. Now, that's a complete one-third of the year. And we staff the department with 60 personnel for 24/7/365. So there's also a B and a C shift firefighter that's working at 2,900 hours a year also. Okay, we have three platoons broken up into 24-hour shifts. And this is the predominant schedule that's used in California and throughout the United States. And FLSA laws, you know, the way all that's worked out is after 204 hours, it's actually considered overtime. Now, I'm gonna explain that a little bit more when we get into the numbers slide, so you have a better understanding of when the overtime kicks in and the changes that actually have taken place since 1999 to get the overtime or staffing numbers to where they are today. Constant staffing, you know, this is just kind of a review here. Whether it's 2 o'clock in the morning or 2 o'clock in the afternoon, the citizens in Glendale will get the same response. We don't cut back after 6, 7, or 8 o'clock at night, because it can be an emergency at 2 o'clock in the morning just as well as 2 o'clock in the afternoon. And the citizens should not really have to worry about what's coming. Did the fire department staff down? And that's the point of constant staffing. The outcome, when a firefighter is off work for any reason, and this is where the staffing comes in, whether it's vacation, whether it's sick leave, whether it's training, whether it's comp leave, whatever it is, we staff back behind those individuals. That's the point of having the constant staffing to providing the same level of response, whether it's a heart attack, whether it's a structure fire, whether it's a brush fire or a high-rise incident. The citizens in the community know what they have, and they know what the expectations should be from their fire departments. Mr. Weaver?
So that means like when we're half-day on Friday, and you can't find half the people you want, that can't happen in the fire service?
No.
If you backfill it?
No. 24/7/365 means just that. There are no half-day Fridays. There's no taking off or reducing the staffing on Christmas, New Year's, Thanksgiving, the Fourth of July. There's none of that. And just because those days happen, that doesn't mean the workload is reduced. Our upcoming holiday, the Fourth of July next week, there was a discussion in council a couple weeks ago. The fire department is out roaming the neighborhoods, roaming their districts, making sure the citizens of Glendale are safe, making sure no illegal firework activities are taking place. Last year is a great example of that. When you look around the neighboring communities, we had no fireworks here in Glendale, and we also didn't have any fires in Glendale that day. I know, because I had the duty that day. When you look around in Burbank, they had a fire at the fireworks show. Pasadena had a fire at the Rose Bowl. As you view from the mountaintops out into the East San Gabriel Valley, there were several fires that took place. I know, because our people went to go help them. Our people were out making sure the citizens were safe. Mr. Quintero?
The FLSA is a federal statute, I assume?
Yes, Fair Labor Standards Act, yes.
So then all of the firefighters across the nation are pretty well covered by this FLSA?
Absolutely. We're not doing business any different today than most fire departments around California and the United States. And I say today, because when I take you back to 1999, you'll have some understandings of some of the things that took place. And I hope to address one of the questions that Mr. Yeseffian had earlier when he talked about becoming competitive. Because in 1999, we had to make a conscious decision here in the fire department to become competitive, to maintain our levels of staffing, and not train people to go to the Los Angeles County or City Fire Department, or the County of Orange, or Anaheim, or anywhere else. And that's when the transition took place, and that's why we're identifying it at that point in time.
Before you go any further?
Yes.
The issue of the, on Slide 35, you had 60 firefighters and paramedics on duty every day, and this is basically, that's what you need? That's your minimum you need?
That, we feel that's the minimum we need for handling emergencies in the city of Glendale.
That's four, based on the standards? That's the four that's in each fire?
That's four base, four on every engine company, four on every ladder truck company, two on every rescue ambulance.
So when you drop below 60 is when you have to fill in?
When we drop below 60, that's when we actually staff.
Okay, so you don't need 64, 65?
In the future, as the demographics of the community continue to change, and the traffic becomes more challenging, and the populations continue to grow or increase?
And you need more?
We may come back to you and say, we may need more in the future. But today, this is where we're at.
Okay, so you need the 60. You have to have that. That's the number. You also talked about a B shift and a C shift. What is that?
There's three platoons that staff the organization, A platoon, B platoon, and a C platoon. And in order for us to rotate our firefighters out to get an adequate amount of time, we developed a three-platoon system. The city of Glendale didn't develop it. It came along in the fire service.
Okay, so A platoon does three days?
Not in a row. Basically, the way the system works is, let's just say today is Monday. Today is Tuesday, okay? And today is, let's just say it's B shift today. Okay, B shift will work Tuesday, come in at 07:30 a.m. on Tuesday morning, and they get off tomorrow morning. They come back Thursday morning, and they get off Friday morning, and they come back Saturday morning, and they get off Sunday morning. So for that entire 24-block, 24-hour block of time, they are staffed, and they are covering their districts and their fire stations.
They work for 24 hours, then they take a day off so they can rest or do whatever they need?
Exactly.
Then they come back on a...
Do it again.
So nobody's working three days in a row?
No, that can happen also. In order to staff the organization, a number of people work three days in a row.
But on a structural basis, you'll have, A shift will cover a 24-hour period, then B shift covers a 24-hour period.
And C shift...
Well, you can't say it just works A, B, and C, because, believe me, their scheduling process is more complicated than the IRS tax code.
At the end of those three days...
They will fill in all of the, they will fill in all of the days.
There's four days off.
Right.
Okay, so you work 24 on, 24 off, 24 on, 24 off, 24 on, four days off. And let me also clear...
If I can, if I can, resulting in an average work week of about 56 hours a week, right?
Yes, 56-hour work week.
According to the 56-hour schedule.
And also...
Higher industry.
To address coverage and personnel, through our automatic aid agreements with Verdugo Dispatch Center, dispatching for Area C, which is 11 fire departments, 40 fire stations, I think it's 12 ladder trucks and 20-some-odd rescue ambulances, we have some built-in agreements where we get the additional help just at the push of a button in our dispatch center. If there's a major alarm fire here in the city of Glendale, with our automatic aid agreements that's managed through Verdugo Dispatch, we have an abundance of help coming very rapidly to support citizens of Glendale, just as we would provide the same thing to Burbank, Pasadena, Arcadia, or Monrovia.
Okay, thank you.
Well...
Yee-haw!
Let's see here. We'll get her. 37. 37, I think? Yep. Okay, now, 1999, here's the timeframe we're looking at here. Overtime detail. And we just, it's staffing and it's overtime. And I want to create a clear understanding for the council so they can really understand the numbers. Now, in 1999, I want to take you back and try to put you in the setting where we were at as an organization in the fire department here. We had a number of firefighters leaving, going to different agencies, because we weren't competitive in the workforce and with competitive fire departments. We were starting a paramedic program. So we had a lot of things going on. And in for, in order for us to really, you know, maintain our strength as an organization, we needed to keep our people here. And in order for us to keep our people so they can gain that experience, we had to make some changes in our contract. And that's what's reflected here. And it's broken up into two, the two, two sections here so you can get an idea. Overtime hours in 1999 dollars and total overtime expenditures. Now, in 1999, you can see, our overtime in 1999 dollars was 1.4 million, basically. And we had a specialty rate differential pay, only one at that point, so it made our total overtime budget of 1.4 million dollars. Not a big number in today's terms when we're looking at the $5 million number. But even in 1999, our numbers did not come from true overtime. You can see our true overtime in the operations section of the organization was 1.2 million. That's the key. That's the staffing. That's the vacations. That's the sick leave. That's the comp time. That's all those things to staff the department on a daily basis to maintain that level of service. Now, when you look at our non-operational staffing, the $253,000 number, now that's the number. But that's a very important number to understand also, because in order for us to do business as an organization, you can see the majority of our personnel are on an A, B, and C platoon schedule. Sometimes we have to have meetings and invite people from all three shifts. And in order to have some of these training meetings, safety meetings, whatever it may be, we'll have to bring them in off-duty and pay them overtime and other different things. Buy a new apparatus. The committee may be made up of people from all three shifts. When we bring them in, we pay them overtime to put the projects together and different things that we need to do to run the organization. So you can kind of see what's taking place here. And as you move forward in 2000, you can see the number grows. But the overtime hours here is also based on the staffing levels and where are we at as an organization? Are we short people? Are we over-hired? Where are we at as an organization? As you can see the numbers here, Mr. Quintero?
Overtime is paid at time and a half, or double time, or what rate is it?
Well, here's, there's a transition that's gonna take place here. And remember I said, in order to become competitive as a fire department and an organization in the fire service, we have to start doing business like other fire departments do business. This is when the contractual changes came. Overtime started to get paid at a time and a half rate without having to move into the FLXA sleep time exemption rules in 2003. Okay? This is when the overtime began to be paid at a time and a half rate. And that's when you can see the number is starting to move and is starting to grow. But also, there's another dynamic here. When you look at the cumulative COLA, don't dismiss that column, because once again, in order for us to be competitive as an organization, we had to make some changes in our pay rate because other fire departments were moving further and further and further away from us. In order for us to do that, there's raises, and this was cumulative COLA. That's what that means. These are the raises that we were given from 2000 to 2007, as you'll see on the next page. So the numbers in 1999 to 2003, 1.4 million or 1.9 million directly relate to the total overtime hours. Okay? And you'll see that this comes in cycles as staffing becomes higher or lower, but the hours really don't change. This is what you have to understand.
Chief, if I can on that, what happened in 2001, 2002?
2001...
With the number of hours being so high?
We were short personnel. This is when the people were leaving. And it was, it was kind of a double-edged sword. We had a number of retirements taking place, and we had a number of people leaving to go to other organizations. So we had people leaving at the top of the organization. We had people leaving at the bottom of the organization. So that's why these numbers became high. In 2001, we had an academy, a pretty large academy. We started to catch up a little bit. In 2002, we had an additional academy that took place. And you can see the numbers in 2003 have a pretty big drop right here. We started to catch up. So these are the dynamics here. And as you'll see in the next slide, and notice some of the things that we were doing to help offset some of our staffing costs, okay? Here's the hours in 2007. These are estimated hours, 108,000 hours. But you can look, we're funding a number of these hours, and I'll show you the breakdown on the next slide, with grant-funded overtime. That means that our people are going out finding new ways to do business in the way that we did business in the past.
Right, but why is our numbers on the total overtime hours, you said, the reason it dropped is because people were leaving?
Mm-hmm.
Now, we have given them more money and so on and so forth. Our numbers is increasing again after 2003, which was a low of 86,000 hours. The following year in 2004 goes to 97. Following year, it drops to 92. Then it goes up again to 97, and then it goes, it's going to go even higher. Is it because we're not recruiting enough people? What is this attributed to? Is it attributed? The issue isn't where you make the money from.
Right.
Issue is, why are you having? And that's my main question.
Right.
I'm not asking you to justify why you should get paid. You should get paid. You work, you get paid.
Right.
I mean, you know, that's how people are in this country. I mean, that's what, we live in this country. I mean, nobody works for free, and they shouldn't. My question is, what is attributing to the numbers increasing? Now, you had an explanation for 2000, 1999, 2000. Some of those issues have been remedied after 2003. You could see we started increasing the salaries and so on and so forth to catch up with our competitors.
Right.
Now, but it continued to go up. Even though we were paying more money, it still continued to go up. Is it due to retirement? Is it due to the fact that we're not getting enough people in? Is it because we're having more catastrophes? What is the reason for? That's what I want to know. That's the main question I have.
And that's why I put this up here, because I want to explain this, okay? When you look at the 83,000-hour number, okay? That number remains somewhat constant across the board, and you can see when staffing levels rise and fall, okay? But the big number down here is that 7,000-hour number, and that's our grant-funded training because we put a couple of new programs on the map. One primarily, for example, is our USAR program. In our USAR program, our hours had to increase because we had to develop some core-level competencies for our personnel to be able to ride this type-one USAR vehicle. One would be confined space rescue training. One would be trench training. One would be Rescue Systems 1. One would be Rescue Systems 2 training, and a lot of other training that goes along with that. And it's the combination. Yeah, there's retirement, there's getting enough people in the academies and getting them to complete the academy. The fire academy is a very difficult process to complete. For example, our last academy, we brought 10 people in and six people graduated. It's a very challenging process. So if you come in and you're not ready, that's attributed to it. Yes, sir?
Well, yeah, let me come back to the key part of overtime, which is the operations. That's the biggest bulk. We go from '04 where we were in the low 80s, '05, '06, 70,000 hours, '06, '07, 77. What do you attribute the additional, for example, 6,000 estimated hours in operations going into '07?
Well, we put a new rescue ambulance in service March first. That's one, okay? We have a number of paramedics in school. We've been trying to get this new rescue ambulance staffed up. That's, we have to hire back behind them to fill those positions. We have to continually staff those positions to get them there. That's why the numbers are higher. And at the tail end of '06 into '07, we've constantly been putting on training classes. Now, you have to visualize here, when I'm talking about a training class, I'm not talking about sending one or two people to training. I'm talking about sending 10 or 15 or 20 people to training at a time, which impacts the operations, which means that we have to staff back behind them to cover them.
So adding, so adding another, adding the fifth rescue ambulance?
Yes.
Doesn't mean that the overtime for all the other ambulances necessarily goes down?
No, no.
Because as each ambulance unit will by its very nature end up generating overtime by the nature of its operation.
Absolutely. When a firefighter or paramedic takes a vacation day, takes a sick day, maybe get hurt, comp leave, whatever it may be, we continually have to staff back, and it's additional positions to staff for.
So what's the, what's the reasoning behind EMS going up too? I mean, I mean, at one point, you had a lot. In 2002, you had a lot.
EMS has kind of gone down a little bit.
But it's, I mean, 2004 was 11,000, almost 12,000. Next one is 12,000. 2006 is 14,599, and you're going down a little bit to 13,000. Is it because some of those trainings have taken place and you don't need as much?
Well, EMS is going down because we're starting to try, we're starting to catch up with the paramedics.
So these guys have been trained, so now the trained personnel are there, so they don't need to be trained anymore, so you're-
But it's a constant process. In order to stay on top of this process through promotions and other things like that, we have to constantly train new personnel.
Okay. One thing that I'm having difficulty understanding, and forgive me, non-operation staffing. Earlier on, I think Chief Howard explained to me that non-operation staffing is when you take people to train. So, okay, so we got 3,000 hours there for training. Then we have a part of that 13,000 which is for training. Then there is another training on the 83,000. How many places do we put this training in?
Well, first, let me, let me explain a little bit more about our training, okay? There's organizational training, that's requirements. There's local, there's state, and there's federal mandated training. So there's a lot of training that takes place in the fire department. In order to stay at core competency levels, we have to continue to prepare and learn the newest and latest techniques that are out there to provide the best service possible to the community. Now, non-staffing overtime. Now, that's the balance you were just talking about. Training, recruit fire academies, meetings, inspections of new apparatus. All those different things go in, and all those different things continue to add up.
Okay, so that item doesn't include all the other trainings we talked about earlier?
Non-operational staffing. That's any staffing that takes place for a training meeting, for an apparatus committee meeting. The operations numbers in there are purely for staffing those 60 positions in the fire department.
Okay.
As I noticed in one of the meetings that we had had before, when internal audit was going over some of the statistics behind the changes that you see in the operations line, the anomalies that show up in 2001, 2002 is almost a direct correlation to the academies that are, that are taking place. And when you look at the review of the numbers behind those, you have individuals, we, the training staff is our own staff, so they're taken out of normal deployment and then used for, for training. The staff support that is associated with the academy comes out of our normal deployment. Those individuals, their jobs are have, have to be backfilled. Once again, going to whatever the constant manning is each day, whenever anybody is pulled out of the constant manning, then it's overtime that backfills that position. So these, those anomalies by the work that we saw from internal audit is almost directly associated with the advent of a, an academy.
And also, Mr. Yusefian, just to try to put a little more clarification in here, okay? If one firefighter is injured, and it's a significant injury, let's just say a back injury, for example, and he happens to be off a year, okay? That's 3,000 hours right there that we have to cover. Last year and the year before, we had significant amounts of injuries on duty, and that creates a larger number there.
Well, do we know how much of that 83,000 was that? Do we have a breakdown of that?
I'd like internal audit. Come on.
Mayor and Councilman, I don't have that specific detail on the 83,000 at my fingertips. I can address one of the concerns that Mr. Yusefian had raised. If you do a comparison of 2003 labor hours of 86,000 and compare it to the 2007 number of 108,000, you can see the difference there. A large part of that is, is a staffing issue at this point. When you compare the 203, you compare the 2003 numbers to the 2007 numbers, in 2003, we had 196 sworn firefighters, and in 2007, we have actually 184. So there's a difference of 12 people. They're actually 12, they're 12 short at this point. And so what, what that means is, if you're short bodies and you're having to backfill with people on a recall basis, and that's one of the reasons why you have more hours of overtime now as you did in 2003, which is a year that I think that was fairly representative of tight management controls, and because of the attrition that's taken place and not being able to backfill fast enough, that's what's put you in a position where your 2007 hours are higher.
So there, in my mind, I see there are two problems and also two opportunities. One, you're short people, which means your HR needs to go on overtime and start, literally, maybe needs to be, but needs to go out and start recruiting people because you need to have bodies. You have to have real bodies. Because at one point, you're going to reach a point that people are going to be just bloody tired. They don't care how much overtime you give them. So you need to get those bodies in. That's one. The second is, probably because you didn't have as many bodies, that may have caused some of your injuries because the people are just way too bloody tired to be working all the shifts. And so I think if you eliminate some of the injuries by, in hiring some of those, and that's what, to be honest with you, the issue isn't the money as much. To me, what I want to know is, what strategies is the fire department going to put in place to remedy some of these issues? And we dealt with this with the fire department, police department a couple of years ago. The chief was in front of us. We asked him that he needs to move and move rapidly to hire more police officers to eliminate some of those overtime issues, and to their credit, they worked their fingers to the bone and got that done. So what I wanted to know from you guys, and based on your staffing information that you're telling me, it's almost pretty much the same issue. And you need to get these people hired. I understand people work 20 years, 25 years. They're, they have 3% at 50. It's time for them to retire. They take their retirement and go. But you need to have some 21-year-olds standing in line to replace those people who are leaving. And it's taking a little bit longer, but I think we need to expand and make almost our recruitment on every-year basis, not every two years or every four years that we've done in the past. And we did approve some budget last time to start getting on that track and start getting more people in. So that's what I'm more interested in. I'm not here to indict you guys. I'm not here to really stick it to you. I think it's important to have this study so public understands what this is, because there's people come around and they talk about it. And they do have that right to say that, because it is very difficult to understand when you look at just the last number. You go, gee, $5 million overtime. What is this all about? But when the explanations are given, I think it makes it clear for the public and also for me. So I appreciate that very much. But I'd like to somehow hear what you're going to do to alleviate some of these. And if we need to give you more tools, for myself, I'm willing to give you the tools that you need, but you need to ask what the tools are.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Yusefian, just a brief comment about this. We're pursuing hiring very aggressively. It's complex and difficult to hire the right people. We can, we can fill vacancies with warm bodies. Finding Glendale firefighters is a different story. These people that we hire, the men and women that work here, they're cut above, you know? And it's, it's complex in dealing with that. We hired 10 people in the last academy that we put here on the floor in the first of the year. Six, six people graduated and are now outstanding Glendale firefighters and preparing to serve this community for hopefully the better part of the next 30 years. We're working on the attrition. I couldn't agree more, and I'm an advocate of hiring at least annually. Right now, we're in the midst of a recruitment, and we're actually focusing on hiring candidates that have a paramedic certification. It's about $60,000 to send someone to paramedic school. There's advantages and disadvantages to bringing them in with certification, because as you've mentioned, we want those individuals to be firefighters first. Paramedic skills is one that's an ancillary skill. And so we're also working in conjunction, I think you know, we conduct day-to-day business with the city of Pasadena and Burbank. We really want, and for the benefit of the citizens, to send the closest available unit, regardless of jurisdictional boundaries, and it to be transparent. Whoever shows up on scene can do the job effectively, and you could expect the same level of service from a Burbank firefighter as you could a Glendale firefighter. That's a goal, but the aspect of that is, is we're working on a joint recruit academy. And we hope to have the academy in place in September. We're focusing on hiring 15 individuals, but working that is a diligent and an ongoing effort. And I can tell you, my charge is to ensure that not only do we hire the best individuals, but they're reflective of this community. And it is, it's a significant challenge, and I can, I can tell you, we take a great deal of pride in the results of those firefighters that send out, that we send out to provide day-to-day service. And it's complicated and it's time-consuming. But it, but it's something we certainly are able to overcome, and we're working at it aggressively.
Mr. Starb.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I didn't want to, we kind of jumped past this slide. In addition to-
We want to talk about this.
Okay, in addition to dissecting our own numbers, because this isn't justification, but it at least gives us some sense of whether we seem to be completely out of line. I think overtime in the public safety arena is one of the items during budget that at the staff level, we talk a lot about. How to control it, how to get it down, its necessity, all the things you've touched on here today, what's driving the numbers. So without saying that that isn't important, that is very important, and that's our primary focus, is dissecting those numbers. We also look to see what's going on around us, and do we seem to be particularly out of line? Here's just some comparison figures of overtime in our neighboring communities, and a sense of whether we seem to be getting out of whack or we seem to be kind of in there relative to what it's costing other departments comparable to us to fund their overtime in their departments as well. Chief, did you want to comment on these?
I have another question. And I can see the numbers, and I understand that we're not too much over whack. Actually, Burbank pays a little bit more than we do per person when you divide it like that. But to me, I think the problem is pretty much identified. And going back to the solution, is there a disadvantage or an advantage for us to be having these recruits for three different cities? Because, because the advantage is, you share the cost. The disadvantage that I see is, what if Burbank and Pasadena decide to take them and give them a little bit more money and we lose that? Is that, is that a disadvantage or there isn't?
That, that wouldn't happen the way the hiring process works out. Burbank has their process running, Pasadena has their process running, and we have ours. And all that happens very early on. And obviously, the, you know, the obvious advantage, yeah, it's a shared cost. It's a reduced expense for the organization. Obviously, that's the advantage. But when you look behind it, when we talk about our relationships and how we're working with our neighbors and providing that, that quality of service that the city, the citizens of Glendale should expect. Now, if Pasadena's on our borders to the east and Burbank's on our borders to the west, now, we can ensure that all our training is being brought up to the same level, so the expectations of the citizens are high with us, and they should be high with our neighbors also.
That's not what I'm asking.
Let me try and get to your question. To be clear, though, a recruit goes into the academy as a Glendale recruit, a Pasadena recruit, or a Burbank recruit.
Right.
They don't, they're not one big group of people who then decide later on who they're going to go with, and you don't get to pick off of the list.
Right.
Our people go in as our people employed by us in the recruit program.
And, and the other question is, if we have a larger number of recruits go in, is the percentage better to get more people out?
No, not, well, obviously, the percentages are better if a larger number goes in. Well, obviously, that's true. But even behind this academy, we're already looking to early '08 for the next process. It's a process getting a person through all the things that they need to do to get into the academy. And I, Phil, I need to explain that to you so you have a better understanding, because it's just not as simple as going to get a 21-year-old off the street and giving them an opportunity. The competition for these jobs is very high, and the community should expect that the citizens have someone when they respond to their home on an EMS call, that they can trust that their firefighters are going to be quality individuals and of very high integrity. Now, our process ensures that, everything from the written test to the oral interview to the background investigation, to the medical, psychological, and the fire academy, making sure their physical skills are ready to do the job after they start to learn the process of becoming a Glendale firefighter. That process takes approximately, you know, four to six months to get someone through that point. Now, we're setting up for this academy in September with a number of 15, but we're already looking for '08. Our recruitment has already taken place. All these things are already happening because we're looking to the future.
But out of that 15, how many are going to make it?
Well, we would like to believe all 15 are going to make it.
Okay, well, but that last, out of 10, you got six. You're 12 short. Just on the law of averages, I would say, you need to have at least 20 if you want to get 12.
And that's why we're looking for the future. That's why we're going to continue to look in '08 to try to put another academy going. Because we don't want to get too far ahead of the game.
At the rate they're retiring, I don't think you're ever going to get too far ahead.
Chief, I want to interrupt you. We have about 20 minutes to go. We have to pass this budget tonight. We've got a break at noon, we have a closed session at 1:00. So I'm going to ask my colleagues to hold their questions until you've completed your presentation. I have a member from the audience that would like to speak, I'm going to give him the next shot, and then if there's any time afterwards, we can do questions up until the whistle blows at 12:00.
Mayor, we'd like to just, if we could-
I've heard that before, Mr. Yusefian.
Mayor, if we'd like, just covered quickly a couple of overtime reduction measures that we have put in-
The floor is all yours, so please.
Just to finish up, you know, some of the things that we're already doing, significant federal grant funding for our training, we've applied for many different grants, and that's funding quite a bit of our training that's taken place. Civilianizing our prevention positions, that's taken place over the past several years. We've been approved to over-hire for the organization. And also, one of the things that takes place is when our firefighters go out of the city of Glendale, a great deal of that money is reimbursed by, you know, whether it's OES or FEMA, depending on where they go and depending on the incident. So putting it all together, constant staffing requires overtime for employees on leave. We talked about all the different levels of leave. You know, federal law and scheduling requires a minimum of 12 hours overtime per duty employee each 27-day cycle. Now, we went to the 204 to the 206, to the 216, understanding that concept. And then overtime use and expenditures is similar to other departments. We're not doing anything that different than any of the fire departments in Southern California as well as the United States, and our numbers show that we're right in alignment with Burbank and Pasadena fire departments. Future cost reductions, you know, we're trying to get to that over-hire authority, keep non-staffing OT to a minimum. We've reduced that way down over the years, and continue to use grants where possible to manage, to manage our overtime issues.
Yeah, I don't have a question.
Okay, I have two cards, I want to just, so we budget time, so I'm expecting maybe 10 minutes of comments, and I would like the fire department to be able to respond to any comments and questions that are raised. So, Mr. Quintaro, with that.
Okay, I don't have a question, but I have some comments. I personally am not particularly bothered by the overtime that's taken place these past few years, as far as I'm concerned. As long as the firefighters are able to handle the emergencies, if they're not overwork, so to speak, then I think overtime works just fine for me. I just don't see it as being a big issue, quite frankly. Then the second point is that in terms of the new cadets coming in and so forth, I just want to have the best possible candidates for these positions. So as long as that's taking place, I'm fine. So I'm fine with both issues. The overtime, to me, is something, and especially when you show that similarly placed departments, Glendale and, I'm sorry, Pasadena and Burbank, basically have the same overtime expenditures that we do per firefighter. So, you know, we need to hire people, obviously, and you're going to do that with this incoming class, and in '08, you'll have more. And that's it. That's the end of the discussion for me. I'm fine.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to call from members of the public. Is Chris Stavros still here? Are you on duty or anything? Would you like priority?
No, always.
Okay, Mr. Allen.
Please, I'm overcoming personal priority.
Mr. Allen has graciously ceded his order of speaking to you. You can thank him on the way out.
Yeah, I'll thank him. Hi, Chris Stavros, President of Glendale Firefighters Association. A couple of comments I just want to quickly make. A better example of when an engine arrives quicker than an RA would be Station 27 at Western Avenue. They get a call in Brand Park. Okay, they're going to beat the rescue ambulance from Engine 26, or from Station 26 on Brand, by two or three minutes. Okay, so that's a better example of it. One other thing I want, a couple of other comments I want to make is, there's been just a slight hint that maybe overtime is a bad thing. I don't think it is. We want our people to work and be engaged here in Glendale. That's a good thing for the citizens. Broadening their experience base, allowing them to work more is a good thing. It's considered part of their compensation. When somebody decides where they're going to work, one of the common things they say is how much overtime is available. That's not exclusive to fire department. I'm sure members of the police department, I'm sure members of Public Works, the linemen, they like to work extra. Americans are workers. And as probably every one of you know in the occupations you are in, accountants in February, March, and April, they're doing taxes for their friends. Electricians are doing electrical jobs on the weekends for their cousins and relatives, right? Why? Because they want to work more.
You don't get paid by your relatives, I won't tell you that.
So the Greeks are the same as your Indians, is that what you're telling me? Okay.
There are some rewards.
They get you some other way. But that's a, that's a good thing, okay? So I would rather have our employees engaged here, working here, available to work here on Christmas, on Fourth of July, on Labor Day, than pursuing some other occupation. No different in the teaching community, right? Teachers will moonlight working somewhere else because they want to make more money, okay? It's not necessarily a bad thing. On that point, though, I agree with Mr. Yusefian, is too much overtime is not good for the community. And the GFA supports vacancies being filled in a timely fashion. Okay, we support that. Okay, that is a good thing. Right now, I missed part of the presentation, there's 10 vacancies in the firefighter ranks. We support those being filled, because those are 10 extra people that are available to work when you have a big incident in the city. We support promotions in a timely manner. Captain retires, an engineer promotes the captain, creates a vacancy. We support in a timely fashion, three or four weeks, getting that position filled. That's good for our people, that's good for upward mobility, it's good for the community to have that experience base being spread out over more people. The comment of hiring 33 more firefighters will cost you a fortune. I mean, if that's something that you want to head down, it will cost you a fortune. PD versus fire overtime. We operate totally differently. We have our people deployed in the field, ready to work now. We have very few people in what you call a 40-hour office position that are available to come out and help. And what the fire service in California has done is they've been very proactive. Instead of having all these extra people available to come out and work, we draw from other communities. Because Burbank can't handle a big fire in their city, or even a big medical incident, they can't, they rely on us. And so the mutual aid, the automatic aid agreements allow, recognize that, and recognize that a local agency will become quickly overwhelmed with their incident, and so those other agencies come into field. And we do the same thing with them as Mr. Quintaro said when we were over in Griffith Park. We were over there helping them, I was there all night. When we have a big fire in Glendale, LA City, you can bet, will be here in force, and they're happy to, happy to provide that service. PD, on the other hand, they do a great job, it's not what I'm getting at, but they have a lot of people available in their, in their, in the police building, detectives that can come out and help them with a big incident. We don't have that. Our people are out there in the field every day. The one other thing that's been bandied about, and I'm just going to touch on it real briefly because I'm sure Mr. Allen is going to bring it up, and that is 12-hour shifts. One of the things that I told you is we do our homework. I don't have any notes in front of me, so I'm just going off memory. But one of the reasons that California and a lot of the West Coast has been much more progressive and fiscally responsible in this area is because we work the 24-hour shift. It saves you a lot of money. FDNY works 10s and 14s. They work 10-hour day shifts, 14-hour night shifts. They cover 100 square miles less than the city of Los Angeles, with twice as many people in it, 8 million versus 4 million. They have over 14,000 people delivering emergency medical and fire services in the city of New York. The city of Los Angeles, 100 square miles larger, with half as many people, has a little over 3,000 doing the same thing. Now, there's a couple of reasons for that, if you'll bear with me. They staff some of their fire engines and fire trucks with five or six people in the city of New York. One of the reasons is they have a large fire load in that city. When they get a high-rise fire in a building that doesn't have sprinklers, they're working their butt off, they need all those people. But that clearly does not make up for the difference, the huge disparity in numbers. And the major reason is, is if you want to go to a 12-hour shift or something like that, it's going to cost you 40% more, right off the top. This is an efficient, fiscally way to operate. Personally, I'd love the 12-hour shift. I would love it. I'll work less, and there'll be way more overtime available. That's the bottom line. One other thing I just want to say about this process is, I really appreciate the fire department being able to offer this information. If you have any questions for me, we agree on most things with fire management, not everything. We don't agree on everything, but most things we agree upon. They did a very good job. If you have any questions, you want a different perspective, I'm always available to answer any questions that you have. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Maybe we could have a special session to find out what you disagree with on management, by the way, we could-
You guys want more work? Well, we can do that, but I'm guessing that you've got better things to do, but someday. There are not many, but there are a few. You know, I'll mention one of them, because we're here. The over-hire. I think they talked about an over-hire. The over-hire doesn't save you a lot of money, though it will save you some. But it also requires a fire, there are days when nobody's off duty, which means on those days, what do you have? You have more than 60 working, you have too many. Now, we agree a modest over-hire is a good idea. We're going to have an academy graduate around Thanksgiving. Now, if they can project ahead and see that there's going to be two or three more openings in April, May, June of the next year, then I would hire for those positions. But to just arbitrarily hire extra people, we don't think that's the best thing. We don't think it saves you a lot of money. As a matter of fact, Mr. Ayers could probably tell you that it's going to save you very little money. But if that's something that they want to do, we've agreed to letting them do it, and we're on board with it. That's just one example of it. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council staff, and of course, the community. There are several issues that I'd like to touch on today. One is that I really think we have to applaud the city attorney from cutting his staff from 23 people down to 13. And I think that's great. However, however, it was an extra $100,000 for those 13 people. I would assume that that is some sort of an error?
No.
It's not an error?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's not an error. I believe finance has probably placed those individuals within the department budgets where they belong. They used to be placed in, no matter who was paying for that individual, for example, was Public Works Attorney paid for by Public Works, used to be carried on our books, now that individual's within Public Works. So you have 13 bodies that are actually in the budget, paid for by the city attorney's general fund budget.
The bodies, but-
The bodies are still here, but they're in different locations.
But the money hasn't changed.
That's correct.
The money's gone up for fewer people.
Well, that's not, that's not what's happened. I think Mr. Ayers can explain it, the total amount of money is still a total amount of money for the entire department. That may be potentially-
Rather than an error. Rather than entering to a debate, I'll give you a chance to respond. Why don't you go ahead, Mr. Allen?
Okay, the other issue I have is that, it is my understanding of the Brown Act, that the documents that are provided to the city council and shown should be made available in entirety to the public, and I do believe that's accurate. If that is accurate, then this document from the fire department is in error because it does not include all the data that was screened on the screen. So I would like to get a copy of all of the data. That's one thing. Now, back to the fire department. There are some, thank you, Mr. Starbitt, I appreciate that.
But we might note, that was attributed to you as well as me just this morning, same time he's getting it.
Okay, thank you.
Hold, hold, sorry. We did not have full disclosure on that last submission to you, we will correct that.
Okay, good, that's taken care of, I do appreciate that. There were several things that, looking at those slides, there's one thing that the Fair Labor Standards Act says 204 hours, and industry standard is 216. And the, one of the last slides said that the fire department has this built-in overtime based on Fair Labor Standards Act when it was really in an industry standard. Then there is the issue of the paramedics. And the, the heart of the paramedics is, why do the paramedics have to be firefighters? They're paramedics. Maybe we could increase the hiring of paramedics by hiring paramedics instead of paramedic firefighters. Of course, that could be a union requirement. The other thing is, we heard Chief Goggins and Chief Howard talk about recruiting, and how difficult it is to get, I think Chief Howard said how difficult it is to get qualified people, or Chief Gray, but yet Chief Goggins says, competition is basically stiff. You know, there are a lot of people looking for these jobs. Oh, okay. Now, we have 180 positions by the slides, by the, not 60 people a shift, and there is totally insufficient coverage to replace any of those people on vacation, on sick leave or whatever. Now, once upon a time, in fact, on several occasions, we requested information from the fire department on their injuries. Now, the fire department provided us data that didn't indicate the location or type of injury, because they were afraid that we would figure out who it was, and I don't know, somehow where they're take advantage of that information. But if you look at their injury information, you have 487 days away from week, from work, so you're paying the person who's injured, for whatever reason, and you're paying another person overtime coverage, I'm sorry, full staffing coverage. So it's all overtime, right? Time and a half. And then you have 241 days of job transfer or restriction. So there's some more. Now, we do not have enough people just to cover days off, regular attrition, and now we've coupled it with almost 700 additional days where we're double-dipping. So what's happened to the injury program? How are we trying to prevent those injuries? That, to me, is a significant thing, and if you're afraid to show the public what those injuries are a result of, then there's, you know, there's a problem of, why are we smoke screening? Why are we hiding? Why are we keeping this information away from people who may be able to help? And I think that's one of the major things. And also, when you look at the NFPA, and you look at its makeup of fire unions and things like that, and it's, we all know the fire department's a very strong lobby, and they also do a lot of funding for people in elective offices. So we have to take that into consideration. And by the way, the city of Vallejo just went to three people on an apparatus. Thank you.
Mr. Yusefian.
No questions. I just want to thank the fire department and all the people who came forward and gave us all the information that was very helpful. I'm pretty sure some people will watch this later on, and some of their questions will be answered, so I appreciate that very much. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to adjourn.
Well, unless there's any final comments or rebuttal, so to speak, I think adjournment might be appro-
Oh, did you have a? Not so much rebuttal or comment, and Mr. Ayers, again, is probably better equipped to address the issue than I, and it would be somewhat speculative on my part, perhaps the salaries that are reflected in the '06-'07 estimate reflect the salaries for the entire office, not just the 13 employees, as opposed to the, what I count to be approximately nine, we have a vacancy in our office, plus nine positions that are funded in different departments in whole or in part.
Okay.
Because, Mr. Allen's correct.
I would hope so.
Mr. Allen is correct, the salaries reflected in the '05-'06 actuals goes up in the '07-'06-'07 estimate, but the number of salaried employees shown on this one pays salaries in overtime by department reflects 22 versus 13.
Perhaps that indicates the number of employees upon which overtime was based on?
I don't, the attorneys don't get overtime, so the answer to that would be no, because we only have five employees plus part-time who would be eligible for overtime.
And that is correct, Mr. Howard is right. The number that should be in there should be at the 22 level instead of the 13. I did spread out the attorneys that are in Public Works, redevelopment, and so forth for this last year versus comparing it in the prior years where they were, so that was an error on my part. I should have put those, number of staff instead of 13 should be closer to that 21 or 22 level.
Yeah, when I saw this, I should have caught it as well, so apologies.
Okay, I have a motion. Is there a second to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, we are adjourned.
Thank you for your time.